Happy Valentine's Day, happy Ash Wednesday, and it's good to be here with you all. In accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code 2-21 and authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special meeting of the Virginia Beach Council Tuesday, February 13th, 2024, and today, Wednesday, February 14th, 2024, beginning at 9:00 a.m., Virginia Beach Convention and Center, 1019 Street, Suite 3. The purpose of this special meeting is to hold this city council retreat as listed in attached and published agenda. Okay, good morning, everyone, and thank you for a very productive day yesterday. And I thank our facilitators for keeping us on track and everything, and we're ready to rumble.
Great, thank you. Good morning. Welcome back. Happy to be here. Just want to orient you to what our plan for the day is again. We, I'm going to ask first if you just have any reflections from yesterday that you want to share, or if you're thinking about something that wasn't initially on the agenda related to all of this that you want to make sure we have time to talk about, we can share that this morning as well. The big focus of this morning will be looking at the CIP and what's in the CIP, the criteria staff use to prioritize what's in the CIP, some funding gaps in the CIP, so that you're all aware of that. After that, we'll have time for you all to, again, reflect on what we've been talking about, and if you haven't already shared guidance for staff as they're developing the budget to prepare, to share with you next month. We want time for that. And then, before we adjourn, we've just got open time for additional topics that council wants to discuss related to the budget. So if staff didn't anticipate some of the things that you wanted to raise, there's open time for that.
Oh, that's great. Okay, any questions or concerns from yesterday? Think you hit a homerun yesterday. Oh, Barbara.
Well, the day is Ash Wednesday, and I'm giving up complaining for Lent. So please don't take this as complaining. I mean this to be constructive. But I really went home depressed yesterday because we seem to be talking about something that, I don't know, I'm kind of worried that we're undoing some longtime policies. But we used to start our complaints, our retreats by talking about our successes from the previous year. And I don't know, just this one just happened to be at the top of the pile. And I would be glad to compile something like this. Well, this was about 1999, all these things. If we could just hear from our employees what they think they have really accomplished this year. We've done a lot, and we seem to not be acknowledging all of the good things that we've done. And I hope that's not going to be our concentration because we didn't get where we are with our AAA bond rating and our high success with our citizens when they were telling us what they think about the city if we've been doing things wrong. So I hope that we will look at the accomplishments we're making and not so much concentrating on finding fault with what has been going on. But one of the things that, in talking about the dedications so much yesterday, please remember that it's been a longtime policy of the city that if we're going to do anything and we need to look at this with our CIP especially, or our budget, we've got to dedicate a funding source. We've got to know how we're going to pay for it. We can't put something in if we're not, don't know how we're going to pay for it. And that's how these dedications got in. And so I hope we will look at the genesis of each of these. With most of them, they came with a particular tax increase or a particularly tax dedication that made it a dedicated funding source. So that way, when we did something, we knew that it was going to be funded without having to go through the process of competing with everything else. I'm sorry, something's not right here. But we, and going forward, you know, when there are major projects that we want to do, we really need to know how we're going to pay for them, and that's how these dedications got there. And so I think we don't need to look at it as being just a pot of money that's laying there waiting to be spent. It was already spent when it was put in. And so I think we need to go back and know what the intent was and whether we've accomplished that intent. Or, you know, if it's an ongoing project, then that's where the funding is coming from. And so so many, I mean, these good things that we really name when we're naming the city of Virginia Beach had to start at council and with our policies in the past had to be a funding source.
Okay, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day. I just want to add a counter perspective. I don't think yesterday's conversation was depressing so much as a shift in potential direction. And so council member Berluci and I were at the Princess Anne Plaza Civic League last night, and we both represent high-density residential areas in the city. And I think what we hear a lot from our residents is that for taxpayers, they do get great services. So I do, will be on record to say, I think we are a well-managed city, and we do offer really wonderful services, and our staff is top-tier and incredible. So this has nothing to do with that. But residents feel, in neighborhoods, feel overlooked. So these dedications are going out to certain areas of the city, and residents are feeling, well, we're paying taxes too. And beyond the services, where can we get subsidies or where can we get benefits? I also do want to remind council that these policies were made in different cultural moments and by different elected officials that perhaps didn't reflect all the different ways that we could, all the different interests in the city. So I say that to say, I'm from Virginia Beach, born and raised, and I, growing up, never heard of the Green Line. Growing up, never heard of the Agricultural Reserve Program because it didn't affect my life where I lived in the city. And so it's meant to bring up, hey, there's, there are multiple points of view on these issues. What ultimately serves the most public benefit? And how in 2024 can we ensure that we're representing all the needs of the city and not just certain parts of the city?
Okay, anyone else? Sabrina.
So I want to start off, morning to everyone. I want to start off, just to clarify, some comments from yesterday. I am serious about cutting the fat, and that means, you know, of course, streamlining areas in our process and looking at the ways that we've been doing business, cutting out excess waste, those sorts of things. But that does not have anything to do with the staff. Cutting the fat has nothing to do with the staff. I think our staff are some of the greatest people on the planet. And so that has nothing to do with that. But I am serious about being serious about the people's business, and the people's business is looking for ways to conserve, looking for ways to save, cut taxes and those things, and providing the services that they request. Also, in terms of education, education is certainly a part of our mission. We are to enhance education for the city, and I support education. And I certainly am looking for ways to enhance our educational system for the students, for the teachers, and the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You know, if I could just say, you know, I think yesterday, you know, went, you know, very well in a lot of ways. And I think, you know, it might have been brought out that we are a city in many ways and a city in transition. Things are not the same that they were even four years ago. They're not the same they were, you know, pre-COVID. You know, the ugly fact that we have now that we didn't have 10 years ago, we're running out of land. And that's going to require a lot of, you know, decisions that, you know, are going to have to be shifted for that. We have a rising population. We have tremendous, we're going to go over CIP needs. You know, how are we going to figure out the delta between the bond referendum and the actual cost now? You know, so we're in a position, and, you know, and I agree with Ms. Henley, you know, we should celebrate our achievements. But, you know, perhaps we can focus that in the fall, you know, time, at the end of the budget cycle to see what we've done was working effectively. We did have that nice report from the ODU on the quality of life in Hampton Roads. We did have the input, you know, from many of the people in our community engagement, and which actually pointed us in a direction. But the way I kind of viewed, you know, this retreat, I mean, you know, once again, our challenges are multiple, and that should have been, you know, the focus of what we're trying to do today. And I think we had a tremendous variety of input from so many people yesterday with just a different way of looking. You know, we don't curtail conversation, you know, we encourage it because that way we learn from each other and, you know, it's really good. Hey, we had, we started off last year with five new council members. Now, we were up to six new council members. And the thing is, you know, it's a government is a, you know, you know, I'm doing a course right now on intergovernmental relationships. Government is complex. You know, it doesn't run the same way the private sector runs. But the thing is that if we're collaborative and, you know, we're working, you know, to the common goal. But I think the focus of this exercise over this day and a half is to really identify what the barriers to success our city are and how finding that balance between the quality of life that our residents have come to expect and the reality of the challenges that we're having. And so I think when we really get into serious budget discussions, we're going to be better prepared for that objective. Chris?
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I heard the word depressed twice. I left inspired yesterday, and maybe that's a generational difference. But there's conflict in group and collaboration. It's not group think. And when there's group think, I don't want to be a part of group think. I want to be able to be an independent individual that may not see things the way everyone sees it. And that's going to happen at times. And so I'm sorry if people left depressed. That wasn't how I left. I left very encouraged that we could actually have difficult discussions that we typically don't have on Tuesdays because we don't have enough time. I didn't, there was no name throwing. If you look at, you talk about success, Barbara, or Councilwoman Henley, you look at other city councils, they're fighting, they're hurling names at each other. Some of them are actually literally getting physical. They have to have security break them up. This is in our region. We go back to the survey, which is what I said, what I thought should guide us. The public, the citizens, many of them, not all of them, have a concern with trust and integrity. We're going to deal with that today with the PISC and the storm water, and we're going to go down a timeline. When there's commitments made, the public, just like in your home, expects you to keep your commitment. If you don't, there's going to be distrust. I remember my great-grandmother, she said, "There's nothing more dangerous than a liar and a thief. Stay away from both of them." I don't think we have any liars or thieves in government, but the citizens have some concerns because we don't explain what we're doing all the time and why we're doing it. A question in education, if enrollment is going down, why are we building such large schools? We've yet to answer that question to the public. Question five, one thing we should avoid, this is from the citizens. If we're listening to them, because many of them are depressed. I'm glad, it is Ash Wednesday, I have, I am a person of faith. I'm glad that I'm not depressed because my mortgage went up $300, but my income went down 70% joining city council. So that is depressing, but this is what we signed up for. Question five, one thing we should avoid, over unrestrained development, ignoring plans that have been adopted with the public's input, not funding the proper things, violating the Green Line, working as a silo city, public-private partnerships with no payback to the city or taxpayer. Economy and taxes, increasing taxes, wasteful taxes, excessive government spending, waste, harming small businesses. We all received an email yesterday from Knuckles Tree Care. They're not in my district. I have no relationship with them. Their property taxes, their personal property taxes, their real estate assessment, $6,500. They're paying their employees. They're not cheating the system, harming small businesses. Housing and homelessness, I met with a business owner this week. He has a business near the interstate. He had to put 100,000, well, he didn't have to. He invested $100,000 of cameras and a sound speaker because the homeless have built an encampment, a camp, encampment running parallel to his business. And he calls for help. State troopers won't come out. And so he's playing Baby Shark through the loudspeaker. I don't know if that's the best result, but he wants to protect his business. What have we done seriously as a council? Again, this is the what and why that people are asking to try to curb that issue. Nature and environment, events that obstruct access to the oceanfront, consequences of sea level rise, destruction of natural areas, infrastructure, neglecting infrastructure, decaying roadways. That's not negative. That's the truth. That's the reality that our citizens are sharing with us. And we could go on and on here. And so thank you for the wonderful dialogue yesterday. As the mayor said, and I think at the kickoff, let's get it on. Hopefully, there's no, not too much rumbling today. But at the end of the day, we don't always have to agree. Conflict is good. I thank council member Lucci yesterday for pushback. Pushback doesn't mean opposition. It doesn't mean pessimism. It means that we don't agree at that moment, and we have to keep moving forward. So Barbara, I'm sorry you left depressed, but I left encouraged and inspired, and I hope we can get a lot done today. Thank you.
Yeah, I can't say, and Chris, thank you for your comments, you know, spoken from the heart. And, you know, the one thing I found out, especially being a college professor, there's two types of criticism, constructive criticism and destructive criticism. You know, we actually become better than when people come up to us and say, "You can do better." You know, as a college professor, you know, the final arbiters are the students. Usually, there's a correlation between their grade, grade and the amount of criticism. But you also learn that, you know, change the book, change the topic, do this. So I really think that as long as we're, you know, constructively criticizing, you know, I think it should be well-received, and we become better as a unit with it. And I'm sure, Jennifer, you're aware of what I was just talking about. Yeah. Okay, I think we're ready to move on. Thank you.
All right, so we'll start the CIP discussion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as Kevin gets up and kicks off the presentation, I think the real thing that we're trying to set up with council right now is, and just to caveat it all with, 30, 40% increases in the CIP, right? That's simply what we've been seeing the past couple of years. Last year, for the first time, at least that I've been here, and I think in Kevin's history, other than the Great Recession, we had to move out nine CIP projects out of the six-year plan, right? Similar trends we're seeing on, in this year's budget as well. We want to talk to you all about how we, prior to rise, making decisions to get a sense that you all feel that's okay. But I honestly think probably sometime in the summer, after the adoption of this budget, we're going to have to have a sit-down conversation with council and probably try to do an all-day retreat or a day-and-a-half retreat and talk about the CIP because we currently can't do all the things that are in here with all the cost increases that we're seeing. Just this week, the IT department and the HR department came to me on Monday and pointed out to us that the HR system, RFP, is coming in double from what we initially budgeted for, right? So this one was in the budget like in 2018, 2019 for about 14-something million dollars, and we need another about 13, 14 million dollars to get it done. We're seeing that across the board on our CIPs. As we talked about before, the bond referendum, 567, is now over a billion. And then council, we all know, we started doing, started the initial process of the three-by-three-by-three, you know, with the Army Corps of Engineering to think about building out the sea gates and the seawalls, all the things that we need to protect Virginia Beach. And we don't have to make a decision on that now, but likely those things are going to be on the horizon, you know? And I think that's the, the difficulty that we all have, especially you all, city councils, the arbiters, and eventually people who have to make these decisions, is there's only a few ways to fund these things, right? It's either we're going to raise revenue, and we know the difficulties that taxpayers are going through. We're going through them as well, and that's going to be a difficult, hard pill for us to navigate. And I don't feel like we're going to want to do that because inflation is high on them as well, you know? But the only other way to address that is for us to look at what we're doing now as a city and see if we can make adjustments there, you know? So right now, the goal we want to get with you all is to not necessarily have you all make a decision on what CIPs come in and come out. We just want to have an eyes-wide-open conversation, let you know what we're facing, let you know how we're trying to prioritize it as we put together the proposed budget for you all, and then to see if we can get concurrence to have exercise with you all in the summer where we can spend more time going over the CIP, to probably even have a eyes-wide-open, come-to-religion conversation about what should we be focusing on and maybe what we may not want to do anymore within the CIP. Yeah, because we don't see these prices coming down anytime soon in a way that's going to be, that's going to allow us to do everything that we have here at this current moment, you know? And with Kevin, go ahead and take it from there.
Good morning, Kevin. Good morning. All right, so the city manager laid the context perfectly. Found works to come up at the conclusion and try to facilitate that conversation of the prioritization. And I'll have a summary slide of the pre-read material that city council received. So the conversation that will be taking place in addition to the prioritization will be about the project detail list in front of you of the existing projects with additional funding requests. So just what that means are, these are existing projects that are programmed within the CIP, and these are the additional funding needs that have been communicated by directors and CIP section managers. So prior to jumping to that list for that conversation, there's a few things that I thought might be helpful for the overall conversation. First one being to perhaps just go through some terminology related to the CIP. So the, our capital improvement program, the CIP, acronym, please. Okay, so it includes the appropriations to date, which what this means is the previously approved funding for the project based on prior budgets that were appropriated any of those given years. So those are the appropriations to date. In other words, another way of thinking about it, are funds available right now for execution. Some of it's been utilized, some of it is still remaining to be utilized, but it's in the bank right now, ready for use towards the project. So the upcoming budget, year one of the upcoming CIP, proposed CIP, will be a, an additional appropriation if approved by city council towards that project. So that's year one. Years two through six, because we have the six-year CIP, are really for planning purposes. So that, those funds aren't there to necessarily go out to contract or be, you know, award a contract against. It's for planning, planning purposes in terms of how much capacity we have in our various revenue sources and means of financing and what we can afford over the six-year period with the CIP. So it's really for planning purposes. So whenever, and the reason that's important is sometimes it can be a little, especially whenever I jump to the number slide, it can be a little overwhelming whenever you see numbers like this in the CIP because to the public or, you know, somebody else, they might look at and say, "Well, it's easy. If you want to cut the real estate tax rate, just cut $30 million from that project or from that CIP." Well, the challenge can be, if you're looking at a CIP and it has funding across all six years and it totals $30 million, that's not really $30 million you can use to cut the current year tax rate. So it's just, it's a different way of thinking as well. I'm spending a little bit of time and planning out and thinking through the CIP is because, again, years two through six are for planning purposes. So this is just the numbers of the currently adopted CIP. So you can see the appropriations to date there being $3.3 billion. And then the FY '24, year one of the CIP was $375 million. Years two through six are that 1.4 billion for planning purposes for a total six-year CIP, including ATDs of just over $5 billion. So some of the things you might notice when looking at the CIP, this is broken up by the various sections of the CIP. Some of the bigger sections within the CIP, roadways, being one of the largest. There's a heavy influx of state and federal money in that. And that's another nuance that's worth pointing out that adds to another level of the complexity with this. You might look at just a project and say, "Okay, well, you know, a $30 million project, you, 15 million of that's state and federal revenue." So not all, not cutting that project entirely translates back to saving all local tax dollars and revenue. So that's just something else to be mindful of when looking at the CIP. Again, I know these are kind of overwhelming numbers. But, you know, following up on the roadway section, the second-largest CIP section is the flood protection program or the bond referendum section of the CIP related to the, we call it the FPP or flood protection program section of the CIP. And then the third-largest is schools with a total program CIP of $720 million over the six-year period. So a little bit of back and forth about the relationship. I was just kind of talking about some of the nuances. Years two through six are really for planning purposes, but also the means of financing of how the projects are composed also might not necessarily translate to immediate tax savings like one might think. So this is just a visual of the back and forth relationship. So for the, for the operating budget side, an impact on the CIP is the allocation of pay-go or pay-as-you-go revenue to the CIP. So that's taking current year tax revenue and transferring it to the CIP to cash fund segment of the overall projects. When looking on the CIP side, it overall projects. When looking on the CIP side, it receives that as a funding source. And then additionally programmed within the CIP are bonds. So the bonds are, you know, yet to be issued bonds. And so whenever a project begins, is underway or near completion, finance will package that up and go to the market and sell the bonds. And the impact on the operating budget from that results in debt service. So that comes back over. So that's what the operating budget picks up is the debt service from, from the issuance of those bonds. So the importance of that is, again, you know, if it's a thirty million dollar project and it's all bond-funded, then if you eliminate thirty million dollars on that project, you don't save thirty million dollars against the tax rate. All you're really doing is reducing a future debt service obligation for the general government, general fund, or special revenue fund. And then another impact, and I think Mrs. Henley was talking about this earlier, whenever she was talking about sustainability and the planning of a project, same thing with CIP. So whenever you have a project completion, the other thing that the operating budget needs to anticipate is the operating budget impact of that. A recent example of that is the Burton Station Fire Station. There was a need, whenever that gets completed, to plus up the fire department and ensure they've got proper staffing and equipment to man the, or fulfill that with FTEs at the fire station. So those are the type of things that whenever a facility's coming onboard like that, that's one of the things that takes a priority in ensuring that we allocate resources in the operating budget to that following year to make sure that we're fulfilling the need and the expectation of the community and city council. So this is the criteria slide that we're going to have Fountain Works come up and have city council have a conversation about. So these are really kind of the parameters that we're using to evaluate the list in front of city council. First, similar to last year, city council might recall, there's a need to ensure that we have adequate funding to meet our matching obligations. So recently, VDOT, Virginia Department of Transportation, has instituted more of a matching policy. So used to, years ago, the locality used to just receive a blanket amount of state and federal money from the state to cover the city roadway CIP section. In recent years, it's transitioned to where it's more of a matching model to where they might put fifty percent towards a project and the city would put fifty percent local match towards a project, or it's scalable depending on what the agreement is. So one of the things that we try to do in this balancing act is ensure that we maintain all local funding obligations that we need to on the projects to secure and maximize leverage in the state and federal dollars. So another thing that recently happened, the city manager was talking about this, a need to prioritize and ensure we have adequate resources in place to get the projects that are near completion or in the short term, going to completion or construct, or excuse me, going to construction, ensure we have adequate resources on that to award a contract. So this is the exercise that roadways primarily and all these CIP sections went through last year to ensure that they had enough funding in their, in the short term. And whenever we're seeing forty percent in construction or construction increases and inflationary pressures, there was a need to input all the resources towards those short-term projects to get those out the door. And that came at the detriment, unfortunately, of several of the other projects that had to be pushed out into the out-years of the CIP or eliminated altogether. And then the last four bullet points were really a recap of what city council came to a consensus on or the conversation was around at last year's winter retreat. Whenever it comes to looking at the existing cities, facilities or infrastructure, needs to be focused in priority order of maintaining the existing infrastructure and assets, then looking to modernize those. And then the third tier would be looking to expand those if affordable to meet the service, service demands and needs of the public. And then the fourth tier would be look at new facilities and infrastructure to bring onboard if the other, once the others were reviewed. So here's a quick summary slide of the information. Again, I know it's small print, I apologize, and it's more granular level information provided that city council had as a pre-read on this, but this is a summary of it. So for all the various sections, the building, economic tourism, IT or information technology, parks and rec, coastal, roadways and stormwater, the total additional funding needs or requests is about six hundred and forty-nine million dollars. And this is the information the city manager was talking about as this is going to be a significant challenge based on all the other pressures and demands for resources to get these projects, this level of funding over the six-year CIP to get them to completion. So you might notice that some of the other sections aren't necessarily on here. Water and sewer, it's part of the enterprise fund I was talking about yesterday where they have their own, a bond covenant and a dedicated bill payer. And so they don't request general government support for their CIP. But another one that's on here or is not on here are schools. Schools also allocate their resources from the revenue sharing formula to finance and fund their CIP. They certainly have one submitted, and I'm gonna jump to that. Everything reflected to prior to this slide has really been the FY twenty-four operating budget. I know there's been a lot of discussion about the schools, especially the PPEA here recently. So city council previously approved schools to continue to explore and working on design of the three schools. We've learned recently that they don't intend to move forward with it, or it's not in their plan to move forward with the PPEA process. But I did want to include this slide here that summarizes those three projects as submitted by the superintendent estimate of needs. So the important thing here is the timeline that I was talking about yesterday. We just got the school superintendent estimate of needs last Tuesday, not yesterday, but last week. And so by the time they put that out and then school board adopts a proposed budget, we likely won't have time to pick that up and reflect that in the city manager's proposed budget. So we don't know what changes they're gonna be making. So the city manager's proposed budget will likely be including and reflecting the superintendent's estimate needs as is. And for the three PPEA projects that the schools previously were exploring, this is how they've submitted them in the superintendent's estimate of needs. So for the Princess Anne High School, for example, they've submitted, leaving the appropriations to date on the project of one hundred and twenty-four million. Years one through six of the CIPs programmed additional eleven point eight million. And then what they're anticipating is a balance to complete on that project of five hundred and ninety-one million for a total estimate of seven hundred and twenty-seven million for that school and an estimated completion date of twenty forty-seven. For the BF Williams, leaving appropriations date on the project of seventy-one point eight million, fully funding that within the six-year CIP for a total project cost of one hundred and eighteen million and an estimated completion date of twenty thirty. And then the Bayside High Replacement, putting five point nine million dollars on that project in year one. And then they're anticipating that moving outside of not just the six-year CIP window, but a completion date of two thousand and fifty-nine. And then the total estimate for that project of one point five billion dollars. So in doing this, it appears what they've done is taken an inflationary factor. That's well beyond, obviously, the six-year CIP. But this is what will be included in the city manager's proposed budget, but it's not necessarily where they've landed or what is a reflection of the city manager's recommendation on the school budget, but just reflecting it. So that's the conclusion of the information that I have. I'm going to have Fountain Works come back over and back up two slides. And perhaps the conversation can first focus around the criteria. Let us know if we have that right.
I think it's probably fair that council may have some clarifying questions they want to ask, so I think we do that first.
Okay, Worth.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kevin. Just a point of clarification. In fact, so when you say that these requests will be difficult over the next year or next five or six years?
Based on the CIP and the requested amounts of six hundred and forty-nine million, it's not, that's not just asking for it in year one. That is asked by the directors and CIP section managers over the six-year period. So that is a good point of clarification. Six hundred and forty-nine is over the six-year CIP.
Okay, anyone else at this point? So, yeah, Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know this isn't necessarily within our purview because we're not the school board, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say that those numbers are extremely frightening in, in those out-years. And I certainly realize and understand, respect the decision that was made to forego the PPEA process, but I think we can kind of see a little bit of what that process was trying to achieve in terms of economies of scale and bringing the school replacement costs in, in more, I guess, relative today's dollars as opposed to twenty-sixty. So I'd be curious, and I mean, maybe at some other time, just so I can kind of contextualize a little bit of what some of our prior school replacements, like what, what did those cost? And what, if, if we completed those in, say, twenty forty-seven and twenty fifty-nine, would those also be seven hundred million north of a billion-dollar project in those dollars? Just, just so that we can kind of, you know, put these figures in context with what we've done, you know, for, for other builds.
I think, Kevin, the best way to approach that is, I present the budget to you all on March nineteenth. The schools are coming in on the twenty-sixth-
Correct.
-to give you their presentation as well. We can relay these questions to them and, and hopefully they'll bring something forward to kind of address those questions as well. As part of that, we'll make sure we allocate enough time, other than, you know, the ten to fifteen minutes we do for the other city departments will give them a good amount of time so they can go over their operating budget as well as their CIP proposals and highlighting the questions that councils ask to get additional information on.
Thank you. And would now be an appropriate time to ask about prioritizing the delayed deferrals? Or should we wait? The, the, just how, how you prioritize what CIPs are funded and when?
Yes, I think if, as long as, I think right now, we're giving time for council to ask clarifying questions on what I said and what Kevin went over. And then after that, I think that's when Fountain Works will take us through that exercise.
Okay, thank you.
Amelia?
Yes, if you turn back, and thank you for what you've shown us. If you turn back to the CIP criteria, um-
This one, council?
No, no. Right there. I was just wondering, with the new matching funds, is that impacting some of the projects that would have happened earlier, like some that were taken off the board because we needed to match funding for this, like roadways and completions? Did that impact what we would have had done?
Yeah, yes, it has. So like last year, if you remember the calculus of the nine projects that either had to be moved out of the CIP or moved in the out-years, it was because if we didn't add local monies to the federal or the state monies, we would have lost or foregoed that state money. So it does impact the decision-making that we make. So sometimes it does mean that, like, like locally-funded, funded projects may need to have some funds removed from it in order to meet the federal obligation. And sometimes the federal obligation have timelines by which we need to spend their money as well. So it does impact that as well. And Kevin, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Okay, Barbara.
Okay, thank you. Well, sort of along that line, I think that, what you've given us is the what, but we kind of need to also be seeing the why. For example, is a project at this time important because it's been approved? What is that transportation process that we have now that, you know, it has to have certain state funding? So that might be why this particular road project is important now. Or looking at, for example, the building and assets, yesterday we got talking about the leases and that being, but if we have this building, we can reduce some of their lease expense. So are there other factors that relate in here that make it important at this particular time to do something? Or if we don't do something now, what is going to be the impact? I mean, I think of our coastal, there's not a very big coastal amount here, but had we not been doing the coastal work, we would have been suffering some pretty heavy costs with damage during storms. So what are those trade-offs that we're going to have? And then is a project an income producer? You know, is it, is it something that's going to be, something that's going to increase revenue for us? Because I think we have to make sure we're looking at all revenue, not just some revenue. I mean, if something increases revenue in the tourism industry, we're also getting increased real estate tax and personal property tax and B-Pole tax from, from those things. So are they income producers? So I think we need some of this other additional information about each of these projects. I mean, what are the other related factors with them? And, you know, if we don't fix this building's roof, then we're gonna have a bigger expense five years from now. So if, if there's some, some importance, some imminence to something, I think it's important that we, we have that whole broad picture. So we're not just looking at a project and not really knowing all of the other factors about it.
Mrs. Mayor, that's kind of what we articulated, the cadence that we're trying to get here, is that while we really feel that probably in the summertime or in the fall or August or September, city council has probably another day or two-day retreat where we go over those items as well. I think it's gonna be too much to digest and complete this year's budget. So I think we should focus kind of on year one on the budget and then have a more detailed conversation about what stays in and what may possibly come out, or have a conversation about, do we try to raise revenues in some other kind of way? Or it might line in perfectly with the dedication conversation that council may have. Maybe some of these dedications need to be looked at and funds need to be redirected to do some of these things, you know? So that was my goal, Ms. Henley, is that we need to spend a really focused time and kind of go over the CIPs by section, and we can answer those very questions. Are some of these income-producing? Are some of these, if you don't make a decision, a decision's gonna be made for you because the building's gonna collapse and you have to do something? For example, Parks and Rec, right? You know, they have modernization needs. We've been putting that off to address some equity concerns and, and get to a right fit of how council wants to do it. But Michael Kirschman's to the point now where he's has buckets that are stopping leaks and then there's snakes in some of the walls, right? So we're gonna have to make a decision on some things, you know? But I was saying, but eventually if Michael Kirschman has to put two or three million dollars into a roof, it doesn't make any sense for us to, to now of a sudden do a modernization on that. Yeah. So we do, I do think we do need that focused conversation within goes, section by section with city council, you know, to go over some of these issues.
Chris?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Kevin, can you go back to the school CIP slide? All right. Thank you. So Councilman Schulman, great, great point. I just, I have to, as liaison, I respectfully just disagree. We did not do due diligence. The school board did not do what we asked them to do in terms of scalable options. And as a result, the CIP is so inflated that if you just pop, put a pin in it, it'd explode. I want to give some context because you asked some specific questions. Had we actually received what we asked for and they kept their commitment, I'm gonna give you what those numbers could look like. But the school board didn't do what we asked them to do. Let's look at the first school, which was, let's say, Betty F. Williams, designed at a hundred and eighty thousand square feet. If we brought that down to a hundred and sixty thousand square feet at three hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot, which is what S.P. Ballard was able to build Henrico's High for, that would bring us to sixty million. Princess Anne, if you took off a hundred thousand square feet, the population size over there hasn't grown. There's not a ton of new communities. It corners District Eight, Thalia Road. If we had reduced that square footage by a hundred thousand square feet at three hundred and seventy-five dollars, that's eighty-eight million. Same for Bayside. Bayside's had a little bit more expansion with some of the new communities and development in the area. I went to Virginia Wesleyan, bought my first townhouse off of Wesleyan Drive, so I am familiar with that district. Two hundred and thirty-six thousand, that would put us at eighty-eight million. Eighty-eight million plus eighty-eight million plus sixty million is a two hundred and forty million dollar budget to build three schools. Not billions of dollars. Not billions of dollars. Councilman Schulman, you asked about the most recent schools. Kellum was delivered, I believe, in 2014, or 2000. 102 million, it takes, 2014, 102 million, and it provides education for 2,000 students. John B. Die was renovated. A lot of schools look like John B. Die, Kingston, King's Grant, that was the model. Most of those schools look the same. Renovated in 2017 for a cost of $26 million. Vice Mayor, at our last meeting, Chair Melnick stated that the cost to renovate was more than it would have cost to tear down and build. That's inaccurate. In an article on March 4, 2017, at the time, the school board quoted when John B. Die was completed that they would complete Thoroughgood Elementary by 2020. Is that in your district, Councilman Schulman? Has that been renovated? Do you know? Yes? At a cost of $28.3 million in 2020, right before, during COVID, the Great Recession, whatever we want to call it. Princess Anne Middle by 2021 at $78.9 million. At the time, Paul Clea, President of the Association for Learning and Environment's Virginia chapter, said, "Construction prices are going up everywhere and that the trend will likely continue." Clea generally anticipates a 4% rise in cost over the year, and prices can vary, he said, depending on the region and community a school is in, the program it offers, and the age of students. Outside of Kellum at the time, at 102 million, which had a large expansion of development in that area, more children for the schools, 102 million. How do we get to $300 million for a school? $250 million for a school. We built John B. Die renovation. Thoroughgood Elementary, Princess Anne, Kellum. Total, 102 plus 26 is 128, another 28, 156 million. About $230 million for one, two, three, four school modernizations. More than the cost of one of the proposed in the PPE, which was meant to save us money by economies of scale. That's why we shouldn't accept unsolicited proposals with no due diligence. This is inflated. If we updated that, it would change the entire scope of the CIP. But we're not asking these questions, and we don't require the school board to collaborate with us. Other organizations, municipalities in the state of Virginia, the council or the organizing body, the municipality, works with the school board to come up with a plan because they understand the relationship. That didn't happen in Virginia Beach. We were told what they were going to do. They ignored our request. They didn't deliver on what they said they would. And now we have a nice inflated CIP that's very scary, as Josh said, but it's not accurate. Send the bid out to three qualified general contractors, which they didn't want to do, and see if we can get these numbers down. Otherwise, this is what we're looking at. Thank you.
No, I tell you what, you know, a lot of salient points, but let's, that is exactly why the recommendation is going forward, that we have this collaborative meeting with the school board, that we express their concerns, let them answer the questions that are necessary. And that's what we're going to be doing during the budget cycle. You know, I think the ugly reality about what we're confronting here, it's not only with the schools, it's not only, it's with us too, that over the next 10 years or so, we are looking at the potential of not millions, but billions upon billions of necessary CIP money that we're going to need just to maintain ourselves as a city and keep up with our own infrastructure demands, stormwater demands. Let's remember, we got 87 school buildings out there. And how many buildings do we own that require eventual maintenance and things of that nature?
485.
Yeah, and that's quite a bit. And so that's why we're focusing these, this day and a half right now, is to paint the portrait of the needs that we're going to have. So once we go into actual budget deliberations, which we will also include school input and, you know, aligning priorities and things of that nature. You know, the folks, we just got an awesome challenge ahead of us of a magnitude that we never had. And that's why I said in the opening statement that we are a city in transition right now. You know, we are 60-plus years old. We are aging in terms of infrastructure and population that is going to put excessive demands on us going forward. But, you know, hence is, you know, that justifies why we're here. And I'm grateful for the conversation. Josh, and then Sabrina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman, I do appreciate the numbers and the feedback. But just to put a, kind of a point on the question I was trying to ask was, $102 million for Kellum is a good reference point. Those are $2014. That was before the historic inflation that we've witnessed, before the pandemic. It was 10 years ago. So if we've been seeing 30, 40% increases in our CIP, $102 million, I would guess, is probably approaching $200 million in today's money. So that was kind of where I was going with the point I was making. And that is what I would like to hear from the school board, is an analysis of what that school would cost to make in that timeframe.
Okay, thank you. Sabrina.
Just to really be clear and transparent in terms of the school, since I've been on council, I have heard school board members and the superintendent in general say that we need to collaborate more. And I have not seen a, I would say, a consistent, a consistent effort put forward to do it, and a purposeful effort. And even today, I still hear the same thing. They should be here now. We've been discussing them. We've been discussing their projects. They're not here. They should be here because this process in large part involves them. Questions we have, concerns, they should address them because they should be here. Last year, I invited them to come out to the retreat, and somehow, it didn't happen. And so just to be fair, this is something that I know I have advocated for since I've been here. And this is my sixth year. And I have not seen it happen in a way that is purposeful, that is consistent, and that really is genuine to bring both sides together to address these issues. I think when we do see that happen and we do invite them into the process, and it is consistent, and it is genuine, and it is purposeful, we perhaps will see some changes here that will, you know, certainly be impactful for the future.
And, you know, certainly, you know, council member, we are going to be proceeding like that. But Rosemary, how often does a school and, Chris, the school modernization and the committee, combined committee meet?
Recently, we've met a couple of times, you know? But prior to that, we were only meeting every other year.
Every other year. You know, but once again, you know, I think, you know, once again, I think right now, as the climate changes, you know, and I think, you know, I think one of the frustrations that some folks have is the realization that we are two independent and separate bodies, but one of us has the taxing authority, one doesn't. They have their own superintendent, they have their own operations and things. And, you know, I think that's a source of a lot of the frustration that we're having. But, but once again, I think, you know, now that we're facing this new paradigm of challenge, that, you know, there has to be more. And I've had some preliminary conversations with, you know, the newly-appointed superintendent who is aligned with us. And I think, you know, quite frankly, my sense is he's a little bit more open-minded, you know, to a number of the changes that we're going to need, that we're going to have to impose upon ourselves going forward. Chris, did you have a statement?
Yes, sir. I want to kind of be clear with the answer. We met one time at the beginning of last year.
Right.
And think about it, we went through the entire year of the PPE process. And again, Rosemary and I serve as liaisons. It was the two of us, Rosemary, that pushed, pulled, dragged. The recent meeting, there was no initiative. And the, I guess, the, I'm trying to make sure I'm careful with my words. The frustration and the motivation of calling the meeting was we received an email from the chair saying, "We're not going to move forward. There's no need for any more presentations." Patrick and Kevin were not invited to the meeting that we called. I extended the email. They had other commitments and changed their schedule. So I want this room, staff, the public to understand. If this is such a priority, a billion-plus, one meeting in 2023 throughout the entire process, one meeting this year, which we called, and our budget director and city manager weren't invited to the meeting. There's plenty of room for collaboration. There has to be a spirit of collaboration. Transitioning to the next slide, we're talking about the CIP, Tourism and Economic Development. Again, some people may say this is negative, this is criticism, don't get depressed. But in the last reconciliation, we moved money out of sports tourism, which has shown and proven to be one of our best economic development opportunities, produces the highest level of return on investment. And there was a decision made not by the council, not by the body, to move almost $16 million from sports tourism to Atlantic Park, an economic development opportunity that is, I won't say over budget because I keep getting corrected by the development team. It's just, it's not over budget, it just, it's coming in 70 million more than we planned. If that was your household or your business, you'd have a sign on the door saying, "Out of business." But we continue to fund it. It took money from the Princess Anne Athletic Complex and Hampton Road Soccer. So we continue to make decisions, Councilwoman Henley, because we talk about being negative. This is not negative, that's a reality. We made a decision, we took $16 million from sports, which produces a high ROI, to go to the Surf Park, which we still haven't got an update on with the environmental issue going on there. So how do we say we have priorities, but then our actions continue to go in the opposite direction?
Okay, thank you. And, you know, if I can say one of the things during my tenure, especially when I first went on council, there had been periods of conflict and confrontation between this body and the school board over the years. You know, a lot of it was financial, differing priorities and everything. So there was not the spirit of collaboration. You know, I feel a lot more confident now, you know, with the current superintendent, that, you know, this is going to be, you know, change and going on. And then also, the other thing is, you know, whether it be, you know, a lot of the projects that go on, you know, especially Atlantic Park, one of the things that we really engaged in, you know, was, you know, public commitment to it early on. I believe there were over, if I'm not mistaken, 60 public meetings and discussion. And at the first, you know, the public was engaged with this. It was a new concept. It was probably the most ambitious project in the history of Virginia Beach. And then it got racked with, you know, between COVID and inflation and everything. You know, some things, you know, you know, the thing is, we have to react to things that are sometimes out of our control and unanticipated. And, you know, hopefully, as we look at the end game, that this will be a significant revenue generation generator for us in the future. And, you know, really elevate our tourism industry into a top-tier, you know, operation, which I think is the goal. Because once again, as we're looking at all these, and I don't want to belabor the point, as we look at these obligations in the future, we have to, it's going to be incumbent on us to come up with revenue streams that are going to accommodate this that we don't have right now. And, you know, we've got to deal with the realities that some of the projects that we have done are very successful and bearing fruit, and some are in the delay. You know, but one again, you know, there's so many things that have been out of our control. Enough, you know, Hurricane Matthew was a game changer. You know, COVID was a game changer. Inflation is, you know, just a national epidemic that every city is dealing with. And I respectfully, you know, consider that our city is doing remarkably well. If you take a look at the numbers on how we came through COVID versus other things, and it was a total collaborative effort, not only the council members and the staff, but also people within the community that came together. You know, so when we talk about celebrating our successes, you know, I think, you know, we've got to take a look at how we are. And, you know, in looking at this thing, value for tax dollars that were 19 percentage points above national and regional averages. Wallet Hub, you know, raises number three in the country for people satisfied with are the way that we conduct city services. So, you know, let me put it this way. We got a lot more positives going on negative, but that doesn't exclude the fact that what the manager is and Kevin are conveying in terms of addressing our required capital needs is of paramount importance and a huge challenge going forward. And that's why we're talking about and focusing on here. Patrick?
So, Mr. Mayor, I think it seems like council is complete with the clarifying questions. So is it okay for us to go through the exercise?
I think that would be good at this point, yes.
And, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Rosemary has, and then Amelia. Rosemary.
Thank you. I have to agree a lot with our colleague, Councilwoman Taylor. We did ask for scalable options on these schools. Because we, remember, we talked about small, the medium, and the highest, which none of that did come through. So I do think that this has got to be a gut reality check with these numbers coming in and to align them with the declining population that's coming, especially when you extend it to out years. And to have schools that are 50% above, in square footage above the current ones. I think we all agree that they probably needed to be somewhat bigger, but that was hugely bigger, especially with a declining population. But this is new for the schools. They've just, the school board, they've just got these numbers. They need to wrestle with it. I think they are an elected body, just like we are, and that's their purview to look at what their educational needs are with the money that they know that they're going to have because I think they really do try to be fiscally responsible. And I think that they probably may have to look at things more creatively and think about some of the things that we've talked about. And let's, this is their job. This is what they're elected to do. So I'm sure they're, I'm sure they're hearing what we're having to say today and let them come back with some, with some ideas that perhaps are doable. I mean, when you see Bayside High School, 2059, I won't be alive then. Yeah, I think I'll be alive then to see that happen. That's my alma mater. So I think we just all need to take a deep breath and say, let's let the school board do their job and then get together with them.
Yeah, we have to confront reality together.
Just to make sure I'm looking at the right thing.
So we're looking now at the current CIP funding and then what's in our packet, our additional requests. Is that what we're looking at? Summary of CIP additional funding requests is what we have in the packet. And then on this, we've got, are they two separate things or are we putting them together?
So Councilmember Henley, the list, the small list here in front of you, these are- these are the existing projects with additional funding needs. The summary that was, go back, is this the one you're talking about?
Yes.
That is a summation of this by section. So if you go down the more project specific, you'll see the CIP section in the first row. So all of those building projects sum up $111 million. So this is just a summation of this list.
Okay, so, thank goodness. I thought we added them together, then we would have. Thank you for that clarification.
Just, Kevin, just to follow up on Councilwoman Henley's question. In the, in the binder with additional funding requests, are these dollar amounts inclusive of already appropriated funds? These are?
Now, these are additional plus-ups being requested for each of these CIP projects.
To include any of the out years that have already appeared in our CIP? So in years two through six in our current CIP where there are funds programmed? Is this above and beyond that as well? Yikes.
Kevin, if I could also ask, so the stormwater bond referendum, is that factored in? Or is that, is the stormwater flood protection in addition to that?
These, these are more short-term requests that were identified and discussed by the flood protection CIP section manager and LJ. So this is not reflective of the additional $300 million delta that's been referenced whenever we go from the current 700 million to the 1 point, the little over a billion dollars. And the reason for that, as I believe it was LJ that was discussing with council several months back of the process is they're updating these as they get more into the design. So they're revisiting those original project estimates as they're getting more relevant market data and getting estimates and getting closer to their full design on some of these earlier projects. And they're revising accordingly. So that will likely be outside of the six-year window that that plus-up or requested additional funding need would come to be. So.
This refers to the ERU or the 1.5 cent dedication for stormwater, right, Kevin?
It could potentially be a bill pair for it.
But these are, these are where these products come from. They originate.
Yeah, so the, the stormwater, I see the distinction now in the clarification. I'm sorry. It does say stormwater. So yes, Mr. Manager, you're right. Canal management and cave-in repair plus-ups.
Yeah, so again, what we really want to get from council is the mitigation, not the mitigation, the priorities that we use to address the first year of the CIP, right? You know, are you all in concurrence on this? Do you feel like we should change some of these things? And we've already gotten concurrence from you all that we do feel like it's appropriate that in the summer that we have a dedicated retreat to talk about the CIP needs. You know, where we can go in detail to address a lot of the questions that Ms. Henley asked, you know. But right now, as we approach this, this is what we're using as our matrix, as our criteria to determine what's in, what's, what's out.
Okay, Michael?
I was just going to orient you a little more to what we're hoping to hear from you. We've got these six criteria. They're on these orange post-it notes up here, so they're the same, same words in case you can't read up here. I also, as you were discussing the clarifying questions, I was hearing some nuances about how you might prioritize. So some things within these criteria. What's the ROI? So an ROI, return on investment, might be valuable to understand. If there's a higher return on investment, you might place some priority on that. Some of the other words I heard were, is it time sensitive? That fits with this meeting the funding obligations and matching funds, but time sensitivity might be an issue. Have, has the project done due diligence? That might not necessarily be an overall criteria, but do you trust that the numbers are good because there's been due diligence? Tied to that also is, have you accounted for inflation? Is there an inflation adjustment factor? So I think you want to understand that. Understand some of the trade-offs that are happening if you're prioritizing one or over the other. I also, and of course, scalable options came up related to the schools, but that might be of interest. This might be more for the summer conversation, not for the prioritizing now. The other two, the other word I heard was equity. So sometimes you might be looking at this, but you need an equity lens as well in terms of prioritizing because because of, the example was with the parks, that there might be some, some parks where you invest in historically under-invested areas over some of the newer. So just, those are some words I heard and want to put that into your head as you're thinking. Do these six things, which are mirrored on the orange post-its, do they reflect the priorities for you all that you had already given staff in the winter?
Okay, before we get to Michael, is everybody on board with having another similar type session dedicated to CIP coming up at the manager's request? Any objections? Okay, we're good to go. Okay, Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to ask a question about a specific project. I want to be more specific for a moment. Because I'm not really sure how it would fit into these criteria. And that's the flood protection program. Obviously, that's of no surprise to anyone that I'm bringing this up. And Councilmember Rouse noted that we were with the Princess Anne Plaza Civic League just last night. And obviously, that's their top priority. And there's a huge delta between what was funded and what's needed to complete those projects that we promised. And I'm just not sure how a project like that would meet, would fall into the criteria. I don't, I don't see the exact elements that, to me.
So, I say, this doesn't pertain to the flood protection program. Remember, it has lockbox funding specifically for that. And right now, we're in a process, as Kevin mentioned, of scrubbing that, scrubbing and updating the plans because so much of those, those projects, remember, when council authorized that, some of the projects had like 60, 90% plans. Some of them had like preliminary planning documents, right? So we've moved to a place now where we're trying to get to various stages to get a more concrete number on that. The real conversation that we want to have on the flood protection program with you all will probably happen towards the end of, end of the calendar year, right? So that's lockbox. And where we are right now in terms of the spend on that project, we're good. We do know that there's things that we have to make in terms of a decision, but we're good there yet. We don't need to make a decision yet on how to address that at this current time, is my understanding. So this isn't pertaining to that one. Primarily, I think, council, if you would think about it, this is really, we're trying to figure out, as we look at the first year CIP, when you bring new money into the appropriations, new money in on July 1, how do we address that? Years two through six, that's where we'll have those conversations about the sections on which ones got to come in and come out in the long term, you know, and where we want to prioritize.
So if I could just follow up on that, though. Respectfully, I understand what you're saying and I recognize that it's in a lockbox, but the unfunded portions aren't accounted for. And the decisions we would make through the criteria presented here would impact our ability to fund and address the unfunded portions. And I recognize that, as you say, that we don't have to decision point on that now. But the decisions we make today related to this criteria will impact our ability to, to meet the needs that are in the unfunded portions in the later years. So I do think it should remain to this conversation.
I don't think you're wrong, but because of May 15th, you got to pass something. You got to pass a balancing, a structured budget. You got to start somewhere, you know, and I do think there is an opportunity to recover it and undo things. But year one is when new money goes and then we get authorization to move forward on it. But it could be that if a project is, if a project is ready for construction, you can't really stop it. But if a project, if you do move money from into year one to get appropriated, and we're not ready for construction yet, or we're not ready to move forward with it, you can undo it in other conversations as well, right? But you got to start somewhere. You got to limit and you got to narrow the scope in order for us to get something done. If not, we'll never be able to actually get something done unless council wants to just blow up everything on the agenda and just focus on the CIP from now until May, you know?
No, thanks. And just one more rebuttal, if I may. I just, I just, if nothing else, want to just drive the point home about the promises that were made during that program and the expectations that were set. Because I acknowledge, we do need to start somewhere and we do need to, to have criteria in order to make decisions. But at the same time, let's just take an imaginary road project for $100 million in, that we could fund in year one. That could impact our ability to, to, to fund those projects as we move forward. So as, as we consider these priorities, we also have to think about the promises that have been made and the expectations that were set within the community, particularly for these projects. And I have some concerns about that because I don't want to find ourselves three or four years from now and say, well, when we funded this and then we, and then we had this program and now we don't have any money to complete the projects that we told you that we would complete in 2020? So that is a concern of mine.
But I would say, again, May, you all will get this in May, and if you all feel like there's projects in there that we recommend to you all, we can always undo it then before adoption. But there's a longer time horizon for the flood protection projects that we can navigate as well. And we do have a plethora of grants out that's available that's helping with some of the, cover some of the inflationary costs as well. So we are navigating it. I don't feel like the decisions that we make here will, will hinder our ability to achieve those goals. Because I do think when council has the conversations about dedications or other revenues and things like that, we could talk about how we address that there.
Okay, Josh Worth and Barbara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of points on these criteria. You know, I don't see anywhere on the list, and maybe it's implicit, as resident, survey resident priorities. And I think, I think, and certainly flood protection and stormwater is a chief among those. But, you know, when we, when we talk about road projects in particular, as we all know, you know, there's no just simple road project anymore. A road project is a stormwater project. In the case of many, many of our, you know, the areas of our city that, that don't have sidewalks and those are pedestrian and biking enhancements. And those things are priorities that, that are, you know, our citizens have communicated to us, you know, through, through the survey and other means. There are also, to an extent, you know, aesthetics and economic, you know, enhancement, economic development oriented. And of course, I think of Shore Drive, you know, with the millions of people who come visit us across the Chesapeake Bay Bridge Tunnel every year and what kind of gateway, you know, to our resort city they're welcome to. So I think, you know, some of the feedback that we've been hearing from residents is important, especially as we consider the comp plan process that we're engaged in right now. And much like, you know, some of the conversations we had yesterday relative to community organization needs, there are emergent, exigent needs that, that pop up, such as land acquisition for conservation purposes. Those, you have to jump on those kinds of opportunities when they arise. And we have to be able to be nimble in that regard. And as far as the criteria go, you know, when, I would, I'd be interested if, you know, part of the consideration was, you know, are, is there, you know, talking about equity, is there geographic equity concerned? And, you know, District 9, as everybody knows, you know, we had several road projects delayed deferred out of that nine. And I was extremely grateful to the council for the, you know, for the partial re-resourcing of, of two of those projects with the Dominion easement acquisition funds. But, you know, that came at the expense, unfortunately, of some of the residents in your district who are going to see impacts from, from, you know, from the transmission lines. And, and your district. So, you know, I think geographic components have to be, you know, kept in mind. I mean, especially now that we, we all represent districts. And so we all have constituents to answer to and try and explain these criteria to people. They don't want to listen to those. And, you know, and we also set people up for, you know, give them false hope and false expectations when, you know, projects been, you know, delayed deferred or, or funds have been appropriated multiple times over the course of a, you know, couple of decades. Again, as, as the case with Shore Drive, I think that's been appropriated and defunded several times. And, you know, the, the folks in that corridor have been waiting on sidewalks for, you know, 30 years. So I, I just, I hope that, you know, when we consider some of the, the equity components of this discussion that, that we, that we think about, you know, places in our city that have not necessarily gotten the attention, you know, over, over the course of time, just for whatever reason. But I think we just need to really think about that, especially as we have to go to these civic league meetings and, and answer our constituents about, you know, about projects that they, that they'll probably never see because they won't live that long.
Okay, Worth and then Barbara?
Thank you, Mayor. So one of the criteria perhaps, that all the CIP projects should be in my district, District 6, but just kidding, of course. So as liaison to the bond referendum oversight board, we meet monthly and we get updates on this 567 and a half million project that's now over a billion dollars. And so one of the possible ways or solutions to help pay for that over $1 billion project is, of course, chasing grants, which our staff is doing. 25 million here, 5 million there, 50 million there. So I think that's really important. But the other thing potentially, and I think as part of the referendum, is that this has, this program is over 10 years. And so I'd like to ask the question, you know, should we, should the Budget Office and Public Works look at a 12-year horizon, 12-year span term versus 10 years? And this body, I think, would have to vote on that to extend that. Or 13 years or 11 years. And so, yes, it's kicking the can, but if we have to pay for something more, can we extend it over 12 years versus 10?
Dana's going to go, but let me start first. I'd say those are good long-term conversations to have. We don't need to have it yet. And then also, part of it is making sure we, we get all the facts and all the information before council starts engaging in that conversation. Because as Mr. Belucci mentioned, a lot of promises and a lot of commitments were made with that, you know? There, there are options available, you know, but I think I would wait till you get eyes wide open and all the information and all the realities and externalities and variables before council engages on that because sometimes words get said that can't get unsaid, you know? But Kevin, but Dana, go ahead if you want to.
Just a state law note, referendum debt has to be issued by eight years from the date of referendum, unless you ask a court to extend it to 10. We asked the court to extend it to 10 to match up with the information that we circulated. But it has to be issued. That 567 and a half has to be issued within 10 years of that referendum date. I will note, subsequent to the referendum, City Council adopted certain items in response to the resolution in September before. One of them was a financial plan. And that plan indicated a desire that any increased debt capacity by the retirement of the referendum debt, that capacity would be put back into the flood protection program. So the sooner you spend the money, the sooner you issue the debt, the sooner you retire the debt, the sooner you'll have that capacity.
But I would just say, let the information, when we get the information, so you guide you where you want to go. Because you all may make, have to make some choices that we don't want to make. But it's better to make those choices when you got the full picture of what, where the information is leading you.
Okay, Barbara?
That same kind of thread back to the promises in that resolution.
That same kind of thread back to the promises in that resolution, of course, we talked about maintenance. And of course, that's a, uh, operation budget, not a CIP budget thing, but I think it plays a part in all of this. And that's where the stormwater aspect really comes in, is with the maintenance. Because we, what we promised was that by having these bond referendum questions as the CIP, it would free up some of that CIP money that we had planned to be able to use in op, in operations and the maintenance. And I know that, I think maybe even last year, we were still using a lot of the A, um, the American Rescue Plan money. Or do we still have any of that that's funding available for stormwater, or did we, I think we have to spend it by, what, twenty-six?
We have to encumber it by December thirty-first of this year and spend it by December twenty-twenty-six. We are still using that to take care of the stormwater needs. We're probably gonna have to come back to council to shift from lake to neighborhoods because, um, the dredging contractors, there's just not enough to do all the work of all the dredging needs across the city. So we may wanna come back to council next council to take some of the money that we dedicated for, like, lake dredging and canal management and move towards neighborhood, because the neighborhood work, we got capacity, contractor capacity, and that can get done quickly within the timeframe. The lake one, we're starting to see with the contractor, contractor availability that we may not be able to do that. So we do plan to bring that to council probably sometime next month to have a conversation as it relates to that. And Ms. Henley, the other component of is the stormwater ERU, that's the one that we've been talking about, that when we, when council made those decisions, we weren't seeing thirty, forty percent increases, you know, so. And when we made that decision to cap it and not increase it for that period of time, that's the reality we're facing. You don't need to make a decision now on an increase, we're going through a rate study to kinda get a sense of the work that's programmed and the money that's coming in, when does it break? But we do foresee that council's probably gonna have to have a conversation about either raising the ERU rate to cover the maintenance work, or finding other pots of monies that we can rededicate to that if you, if council wants to continue to meet that commitment.
Well, I, I think this is an area that we maybe need to be telling our public more about because I know just what I get monthly or bi-monthly for my district in, in what they're doing operationally is a lot. And I don't think the public really has been told that, and so maybe we're kinda falling down on that. But I know they've done an awful lot of, um, uh, visual looking at neighborhoods to determine which ones need what kind of work. And I think there's a lot that's been done that maybe the public doesn't realize about, so maybe we need to kinda tell them a little bit more and let them know that we really are working on this maintenance. And I think we've done a lot. Thank goodness, you know, that we haven't had a hurricane since two thousand and sixteen, which helps a lot, but we're due, overdue. But I, I think we've done a lot and we need to tell people, because we've got some good news too.
But Sally, you're right, I think on the public works staff, especially the operations staff, they've done a tremendous amount of job, and council has been deliberate. So I remember you all, in two thousand and twenty-one, did, for the first time, create a, a stormwater crew and a BMP crew and gave them the vehicles, and we got those fully, um, staffed as well. So council has made a dramatic change in towards addressing it.
Okay, Rosemary.
That, those trucks, the, the, that clean out the, uh, the, the driveways are phenomenal. And, and I think we, we just haven't told the story enough.
I agree with you, I, I wanted to go back to something that Josh was talking about, that maybe it's not really on the criteria list that maybe we might wanna consider. Uh, these are all very, very good things that I think gives us a lot of direction. But there's also things that are in the CIP that have been sitting there, people have been waiting and, for a very long time. And it, it maybe we should look, also, we could add historically things that have been, uh, in our CIP that we haven't gotten to yet, or maybe they're being programmed out. But it's, you know, like I look at the Winston-Salem project, that those people came forward, you know, they've been asking since nineteen eighty-nine for that, for that road project. That's, that's a really long time. So, um, you know, and the sidewalks or whatever it is, if we could add, you know, a length of time that people have been, that have been asking for this, or it's been in our CIP that's just hasn't gotten there yet. If we could use that as one of our criteria.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Amelia.
Just one part to add, on your little list of pinkies, I mentioned impact, but it's not a thing.
Thank you.
Okay, Sabrina.
I also wanna highlight, uh, the American Flood Commission that we joined, um, some time ago. I do attend their meetings, uh, and I notice that they are really helping, uh, their members, they're helping communities in terms of positioning themselves to apply for federal funding. Because this is another collaborative effort, um, that we have to make sure we're engaging in. Not only our other surrounding localities, but also making sure that we're tapping into the resources that we have to help us on a federal level. The AFC, uh, is open to coming out to communities and helping, um, local localities, local government, uh, position themselves for these federal grants. And we just wanna make sure we stay laser focused on that. I know that the staff is looking at grants and actively, uh, seeking grants in that area, but also making sure we, uh, focus on AFC and what they're doing and how they are actually helping these local communities. And they can help us as well. And I'm happy to reconnect us to the AFC, uh, bring them back in to see if there's something they can help us with. And then I also, when I see grants information, I do send it, um, to see if we are, uh, applying for that information. So just wanted to highlight that effort.
Thank you.
Other feedback on the criteria?
And one other thing, Patrick, do you think it would be prudent, uh, you know, to bring forward the money and commitment we made since Hurricane Matthew? You know, that, you know, that, you know, because once again, if I recall, there was a significant priority, uh, sw, you know, uh, switch back then, you know, that we pivoted to are really making that our number one priority.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think we, um, we gave that to you, uh, last year. But I think we probably could update it again because as to Ms. Henley's point and to your point, we have done a lot since then, so I think it's good to kinda keep that list perpetually updated, so we'll get it for you.
Yeah, because, you know, you know, there were considerable efforts even before the storm, uh, water referendum. And the referendum just reaffirmed, you know, the priority need, but we've been putting millions of dollars into this thing over the years.
I think you're right, and Kevin, or LJ, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think when, prior to Matthew, I think it was below ten percent of your CIP, and now I think it's a quarter or a third of the CIP, a quarter of your CIP.
Okay, Barbara.
Someone mentioned that road projects aren't just roads, uh, they're, one of the projects, one of the things that, that really come out of road projects are drainage projects. I mean, all you gotta do is look at some of these BMPs along these roads. So even with our road projects, we've done a tremendous amount for stormwater. And so I think we make sure, capture all of that as well because, uh, some of these BMPs are enormous, I don't.
Yeah. Sadly, to your point, you're absolutely correct, and, and that's some of the things that's really causing the constraints with our budget. In addition to the inflation stuff, is the city's stormwater standards. And we don't, and we know the reason why we got there, it's next to New Orleans, we're the second most inundated with, um, recurrent, um, stormwater rains and the frequencies and the, and the flooding aspects associated with it. For example, Shore Drive Phase Four, one of the big components that's driving the price behind that, that's bringing to something like fifty million dollars, is the key component is stormwater, you know? And, and we have to meet the standards 'cause we, it's for our city's resiliency effort. So it is something that we're navigating. In addition to the inflationary increases, is the increased cost associated with the stormwater standards.
And the BMP acronym is not Big Mud Puddle.
That's for best management practice.
And I think there's a, a, a project that we have in Mr. Belucci's, uh, district, you know, where we're converting a golf course into a, not only a mega BMP, but a also destination, uh, you know, that is gonna be kind of an open space, you know, win-win. Michael, do you wanna elaborate on that a little bit?
I do, we just received an update on that last night. The Bow Creek Stormwater Park is gonna be a really transformational, um, recreational space, community space, as well as create capacity for stormwater storage that will ensure that the homes of Princess Anne Plaza, Windsor Woods, the lakes and surrounding areas, um, remain, uh, safe during, um, storm events and increases property value, um, public confidence in the, in, um, security in the neighborhood. It's really gonna be fantastic, all with trails and, um, nature and recreational activities. I really applaud, um, Parks and Rec and Public Works for their really visionary leadership in establishing, envisioning this, establishing it. And, um, it's one of the things that I wanna make sure that Phase One, Phase Two, and if there's a Phase Three are on time and on schedule and delivered as we promised. It's gonna be a fantastic, um, really new amenity within Virginia Beach for the neighborhood, for the district, and really for the whole city.
Because, you know, that area was significantly, I was doing a lot of home care, uh, PT back then, and those neighborhoods adjacent to that were particularly, you know, hit. And I think it was a magnificent response that the city put together in a collaborative way to, and what, I think that's gonna be, what, was it a seven-year project, Michael? Or I forget how many years?
I, I think Phase, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Kirschman on this.
It's a seven-year project.
Seven-year project, yeah.
But is that both phases?
That's both phases.
That's both phases, so Phase One is scheduled to be completed, I think, next year?
Yeah, for next.
Okay, yeah, what, I think it shows commitment, okay? Anybody else at this point?
So, feel free to, to add, but I wanna kinda step back and look at all of this to help the staff understand what's most important. We started with these roughly in the priority order for staff, you know, meeting funding obligations first, focus on early year resources to complete projects second, et cetera. And we've added some new ideas, how do they fit into that order of what's the highest priority versus it's important?
And I, I think I'll take a, I'll take a stab. I, I do think council, the first one, I think everybody agrees that should be, you know, a priority. Because if, for some reason, we push out a project that has a federal funding component or a state funding component, we just lose that money associated with it, right? So I do think we feel like that's a priority, right, you know? And a lot of times, um, council member Henley like to mention multiple benefits, sometimes those projects still have the multiple benefits of addressing a lot of those other needs as well. But if we can agree that meeting our funding obligations with the feds and the state is priority number one, that's good. And then we could kinda work on making adjustments with your guidance on these other priorities as well.
And then tied to meeting funding obligations, available grants fits under that umbrella, I think. So that doesn't necessarily need to be a new element, I think.
Okay, Barbara.
I, I'm not sure, but I'm particularly thinking of safety, uh, as being a, I mean, if, if there's a, what, where the, wherever it fits in that, if we've got a project that really has a strong safety component, I'm thinking of Indian River Road and that section between Speeds Bridge and Punggao, somebody's going in that creek. So if it's got a safety component, I think it really ought to have a higher priority.
Would the safety component fit usually in that maintenance of existing assets? Not necessarily. So, um, again, there's the, the six on the list with meeting current obligations, those as the top priority. Other ideas out there, geographic equity, safety, residence, um, survey priorities, wait time, things that have been on the CIP a long time. This, the school funding is just, we're gonna have a meeting with them. Is it time sensitive? And this is also a follow-up updating the funding. So, kinda, or exploring other options with bond referendums also separate. So just trying to figure out where these time-sensitive available grants, the wait time, the residence survey priorities, safety, geographic equity fit in.
Okay, Jennifer.
So my, um, immediate reaction to that is the next one, which is finish or complete projects here, um, that are almost finished to, kind of to the point of so many projects get started and then people don't live to see them, or it's decades and decades and decades. So if something is almost done, can we just wrap it up and move on to the next?
Yes, that sticks with this existing.
Okay, any, anything else?
Looks like we might be exactly on time, go figure.
Well, we haven't finished since you haven't told me the order.
Oh, okay. All right.
But it's, um.
Then we got number one taken care of, meet funding obligations, right? Which ones, what are the new ones that were added?
I think number two should be number two on their list.
Right.
With the early resource, I mean, if, if you almost, if you're almost there, we should just get it done like Jennifer talked about.
So it's safety, um, maintenance of existing infrastructure and assets, residence survey priorities, expansion of existing infrastructure to meet community needs, uh, wait time, so projects who've been on the CIP for a long time, geographic equity, modernization of existing facilities and infrastructure, time sensitive, and new facilities and infrastructure. So you're looking at from here over not these.
Rosemary.
So, on the manager's list, number three and four, maintenance and modernization, I think you've gotta really look at that with a clear eye. I mean, do you wanna maintain it when it really needs to be modernized? I mean, are you wasting money on maintenance when it needs to be redone anyways? I think, I think you need to look at those two together to, to evaluate which is the right way to go.
Yeah, so the, the maintenance and modernization go hand in hand.
Okay. Thank you. I think the, and I agree completely with that in, in terms of when the modernization versus the maintenance. And, and I don't know if, if that wait time and geographic equity component are things that we, I, I don't know if that needs to be in a certain position, but I think they just need to be taken into account when, when looking at some of these things. And maybe, maybe you view the maintenance versus the modernization with, with, with those items as a, a lens through which you look, you know, at, at them, as opposed to fitting them on the list in a certain order.
So those things do come into account, like in, in particular, the safety component, right? So if we were ever to a place where we're focusing on one project that had an early completion time or near construction versus another project that was near construction, if it was a choice between which near construction project stays in or stays out, if one has a significant safety component, staff is gonna err on the side on the safety component versus one that may not have a safety component, you know? So we do take those things into account, you know? The things that we don't necessarily take into account and which we're seeking your feedback and guidance on is, um, like geographic equity. And to your point now, we're now a part of, um, a district system as well. So like, we do need to get your guidance as it relates to, to that, you know? And, and also things like wait time, right? You know, because like, um, there have been things that have been committed and promised to certain communities, and to your point, Mr. Schuman, have been deferred or delayed as well, you know? So those are the things that we kinda need you all to let us know, how do we, uh, value those, you know?
Okay, Chris and then Amelia.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. I think it'll be helpful, uh, when we get to that point in the budget this year that maybe we have a little bit, um, more communication. 'Cause I know as a new, uh, council member last year, there were a lot of surprises kinda after. And if we could have those conversations, 'cause Councilman Schuman brings up the equity piece, we share a lot of roads in District Nine, and I know they don't feel, uh, the equity was there. And when we get asked the questions, why, which is in our survey, what, why? I don't know if you've been able to clearly articulate why that was moved, uh, and then when articulate why that was moved. And then when you have the decision, again, right, wrong, or indifferent, to move that sports money, there, the topic comes up of equity. And so may, I don't know how we have more open communication in terms of this process, but if something's going to get knocked out and it's in someone's district, maybe just a heads up so that way we communicate.
No, that's why we're having, you know, the meetings today that are focused on, you know, at least, you know, drawing the template of which the future discussions were going to be coming.
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor. And yes, Councilman Taylor, I articulated them to the best of my ability, but, you know, whether or not people, again, wanted to, wanted to, wanted to hear it is really, you know, part of it. And, I mean, I understood it. And I supported it because, I mean, I voted for the budget. And I understand the importance of completing projects near the construction completion timeframe, which is exactly what happened with Shore Drive Phase Three versus Phase Four. And, you know, we were four, five, five brand-new council people last year in January. And as we see, the budget process starts in the fall. So, and something else I've told my constituents and tried to explain to them is by the time we got the budget in March, it was, it was kind of half-cooked already or fully baked, basically. And so those, the budget that we're working under right now reflected the council's priorities last year. So this budget is ours, and this budget will reflect our priorities.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? Amelia?
I was just bringing in about the geographical equity. With some of that, that Councilwoman Rouse mentioned, some of those, just like she mentioned, some other projects, she just didn't know. This calls for looking at new things. Because even though it's down on the bottom, that's where that equity hasn't happened. So we need to look at what under new facilities relates to something that would help enhance the geographical equity.
Yeah. Mr. Manager, kind of what I'm hearing is your existing criteria makes sense, and some of these new, new yellow circles are filters within each of those criteria. I think that's how you already...
That's how I'm interpreted. I also think some of these other things that council's talking about right now would be helpful for things that we can give you all the information to help that conversation when we have that day and a half or two-day retreat specifically on the CIP. And we can, we can then articulate to you all of Years Two and Six, a geographic breakdown by district, so you all can see that as well. Because in, I do envision in that conversation, it's likely council's going to have to determine some things stay in or some things stay out, or as to Ms. Henley's point, we identify what would be the funding source to keep everything in right now, you know?
Okay. Barbara?
Well, we get a little touchy when we're talking about this topic, I think. And we, I hope we'll remember that, you know, our districts are divided according to population, not geography. And if we're looking at land area, look at District Two, it's half of the city's land area. It's got a lot more miles of roads and ditches than some of the other districts. And so when you're talking about infrastructure, you're talking about another whole component. And so that, I think, needs to be taken into consideration. Because the geography is, so when you're looking at this, we might need to know how many acres or how many miles of road or whatnot are in a, in a district, because that's, that's a whole different system. Because actually, in the northern part of the city, everything else is in the Chesapeake Bay watershed, except maybe a few little fringes. And the southern part of the city is, is the Albemarle watershed, which is an entirely different animal, and the way it works and so forth. So when we're talking geography, we're talking about a lot of other situations. And I think all that needs to be folded in.
Okay. Rosemary?
So this is not the first time we've been in this situation where we've, you know, revenues are down. I mean, it's a little bit different because it's, the shortfall is because of the inflation. But we've been in situations where we had, revenues were down like around 2008, 2009, 2010. And we didn't have the money to fulfill the things that we wanted to do in our CIP. And so what we did then was we would look against what was programmed. And there was lots of money in lots of different buckets. And so rather than having money spread out in so many different buckets, we collaborated and moved some of those buckets around so, and poured some of the money into another bucket so we could get something done. And it's like what I told the schools when we were looking at their, the money that we were supposed to get back to them was to stop putting in all these little things, let's get something built. So we got to try to keep in mind, you know, like Jennifer was saying, things that we're close to getting done, let's get it done, check it off the list so we can start concentrating on others. And that's why with the buckets, you can start emptying some of these buckets into other buckets so you can actually get something done rather than just having it sit there in different little, little buckets.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Is there any other clarification needed at this point? It appears you have a direction that you're going to integrate, you know, the suggestions which are quite appropriate into, you know, the pre-existing ones. It actually emboldens them and clarifies them a lot better in terms of criteria moving forward.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
So we are at a break moment. And when we come back, it's sort of time for council, anything you haven't advised staff that you need to advise them as they're preparing to finalize, finalize the budget they're presenting to you next month, will be seeking direction. And then also just hoping for any other council input. If this didn't cover all the topics, or if you need to come back to some budget CIP related topics, we'll do that.
That'd be great. Let's take a break.
Hello, Mayor. It's the break.
Thank you, welcome back. Mayor, the staff thought since you all were just looking at this list of additional funding requests and there's project managers in the room, if there were any questions that you had, just to give you a few minutes to ask those questions, we saw several of you reading it and making notes, so just wanted to give the opportunity for that.
Okay, any questions in that regard at this point? Yeah, I think it's going to be prudent to go ahead as the manager suggested and have a dedicated time, I guess after the budget is completed and everything, to really go into depth and somehow try to set some type of priority.
All right, no questions?
No questions.
All right, so then, this is sort of the open time, is there direction for staff in terms of preparing the budget that you haven't already given? Yesterday, we went through criteria for the operating budget, today, we just went through criteria for the capital budget, are there other more direct directions?
If I could just say, just to get the ball rolling, I think by the facilitators' methods and everything, we got things really down to the point where I think staff should have a direction, now it's time to bring it forward, the torch is lit, then the games will begin. Worth and then Rosemary.
Thank you, Mayor. So maybe if I could start off with a sense of perspective, Kevin, yesterday with the myth of the billion-dollar budget, we narrowed it down to maybe a half a million dollars or half a, yeah, very small amount of money, so these requests, I mean, is there any room for any additional requests for this year, much less, we don't know what next year or the following years are, so, I mean, is there any money at all for additional CIP requests? And if so, how much?
So councilmember, the PEGO, that relationship back and forth between the operating budget and the CIP, Katie just now giving me this microphone, it would send me lost steps, but the back and forth between the CIP, so the PEGO allocation, unless we make reductions there or increase that, that's based on the funding limitations we're at, there's not much growth opportunity there. One opportunity to look at in the earlier years could be the use of fund balance, which we've historically used attrition savings in the current year, as we continue to get closer to the end of the year, we're halfway through, we can start looking at attrition savings, what the impact will be on the projected fund balance, bottom line, and possible utilization that in year one and two of the CIP next year. So that's one opportunity, one funding opportunity, in terms of debt capacity, the GO bonds, charter limitation, it's fully utilized throughout majority of the six-year CIP, typically in the out-years of the CIP, some charter bond capacity does become, start to become available, as there's an assumed retirement over time feeding the availability, but then also that next year's year six of the CIP will be a brand-new year in which nothing was previously programmed out, so between potential use of some fund balance in the early years and charter bond capacity in the out-years, that's really what we're looking at.
Okay, Rosemary.
I think that this budget retreat, which I've never had since I've been on council, to have something like this has been incredibly valuable, and Kevin, you have done an absolutely masterful job of narrowing things down. Narrowing things succinctly in tables that's easy to read, because we're not all financial people, but you made it really, really good, especially, I mean, I've been doing this for a while, Barbara and Bobby as well, but, you know, but for all of us, actually, you just did an absolutely fantastic, fantastic job, and I think we've seen a lot going through this, and if those of my colleagues, if you've got, it's always easy to add things, it's really easy to try to add things of, you know, the things that we know that our citizens need, it's a lot harder to take things out, that's the part that becomes a lot more painful. But when you see, I think you guys started a list of things that we talked about yesterday, I would suggest you let the manager know, and Kevin know, some things that you could live with if they were taken out, so that, I really truly believe that not only are we struggling with this, and we can't just be thinking about ourselves, we've got to be thinking about our citizens as well. Our citizens are struggling with the inflation, and if there's any way that we can possibly do somewhat of a tax relief in this year's budget to create balance, I mean, last year, we gave huge raises, if you look at the 8% raise that we gave to the schools plus their step, they got a nine-and-a-half percent raise last year, that's huge, and I'm not saying they don't get anything this year, because they're planning on it, and we need to plan for our employees too, but we had a very rich budget last year, and this is your, I think it's the time, we're going to really need to tighten our bills and have some balance that we also need to give relief and help to our citizens and taxpayers, but, so if there's anything that you think that we could cut out, that, I hate to call it fat, because I think there's always things that benefits somebody, but the things that we could, you know, do without, please let the manager and Kevin know, but can't thank you and Patrick enough for what you've done for us these last two days.
Yeah, I think Kevin will refer to you as the budget meister, good stuff. Okay, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I echo the Vice Mayor's comments, this has been a fantastic day and a half, and we've talked more about the budget, I think, in these past two days than we have, you know, I would think all year long, so, thank you very much for the effort, and in that same vein, in terms of taking a look at the CIP, identifying, you know, things that we want to make sure to keep, and things that we'd be, you know, a little bit more comfortable with pushing out, can we get a list of, like we did last year, of the CIPs in our district for each of the council members? Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in terms of direction? You know, and once again, I think there was definite value on focusing on, you know, the challenges, you know, that we're going to be having, you know, let me put it this way, one of the challenges that we have, you know, being a part-time council, that, you know, we really have limited together time, okay, and, you know, I think it's important that when we have the opportunity to dedicate a day and a half to talking about this, as we said, we have challenges now that we never had before, and, you know, we have, in spite of everything, we've had our successes, but, you know, the path ahead is going to be, you know, extremely critical in terms of what we got to do. So I think, you know, right now, I think that, you know, the staff has, you know, a good observation, but I think one of the most important thing was that we had that community connection, and, you know, the ideas of the public were represented in our discussions in a very, very meaningful way going forward. So I think between that and, you know, what we deliberated on, and there was, you know, a lot of really good, you know, thoughts expressed, I mean, I think we have a path toward at least getting to a preliminary budget getting done. Okay, Amelia?
Looking at thoughts, I'm thinking, as we've mentioned, relief, for tax relief, what is possible for 2%? Are you all working on something like that? Just throwing it out there.
Are you asking for what's possible?
Yes, if we looked at a 2% tax relief.
I think the component of it is, you know, if council wants to go down that path, council needs to be willing to, council could say, be willing to have the conversation about all areas of the city's budget feeling that impact, right? You know, what we've been trying to articulate to you all, if you put it all in the general operations of the general government, you're going to feel some constraints there and reductions in services. If council wanted to say dedications share equally on that, schools share equally on that, and the city's general operations share equally on that, that's probably doable, you know, but council needs to be willing to make those decisions across the board and ensure that the schools are going to have to go through that as well.
You know, but, you know, I think what Amelia's trying to say, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, we were talking about a revenue-neutral budget, which would, I think, would be really, really, you know, taxing on our quality of life and, you know, just general operations, but in terms of a modest, you know, reduction, as painful as it may be, you know, I think that might be a course that we want to look to, with shared responsibilities. Worth?
Thank you, Mayor. So one comment about a revenue-neutral budget, a cost of a gallon of milk or a loaf of bread costs X amount of dollars more this year, 3%, 4%, so to me, a revenue-neutral budget should have some kind of inflation into it for the, operating for the next year at a minimum, so I don't think it's fair to ask our staff and the services rendered for our people to operate on a revenue-neutral budget, we have to have a cost of increase living built into it.
That's it, but once again, I think we have to be sensitive, you know, I think it was, maybe use the term share the pain, and, you know, but I think, you know, I think Amelia's request, and some of which we bandied about, you know, is a fair compromise, at least, that's aspirational. Yeah, Rosemary?
Some of you may be aware, but not everybody, of what Chesapeake did last year, not knowing what the future was going to bring, whatever, but instead of reducing their rate, they gave a tax rebate on their people's bills, and so when people receive their bill, kind of like the car tax, they would see where their city council gave them a reduction, so if they're, I'm just going to make up some numbers, so let's say their bill was $5,000, and they got a reduction of $500, so that showed that, how much less they had to pay, so, doesn't have to be a rate cut, we could consider that as well, that's just another option that we could, you know, be thinking about.
Yeah, I think ultimately, you know, we've got to think about the citizen involvement and, you know, things of that nature, and, you know, the ugly reality is that we're all in this boat together.
to operate on a revenue neutral budget. We have to have a cost of increase living built into it.
That's it. But, but once again, I think we have to be sensitive. You know, I think it was maybe use the term share the pain. And, you know, but I think, you know, I think Amelia's request and some of which we bandied about, you know, is a fair compromise. At least that's aspirational. Yeah, Rosemary.
Some of you may be aware, but not everybody, of what Chesapeake did last year. Not knowing what the future was going to, to bring or whatever, but instead of reducing their rate, they gave a tax rebate on their people's bills. And so when people receive their bill, kind of like the car tax, they would see where their city council gave them a reduction. So if they're, I'm just going to make up some numbers. So let's say their bill was $5,000 and they got a reduction of $500. So that showed that how much less they had to pay. So doesn't have to be a rate cut. We could consider that as well. That's just another option that we could, you know, be, be thinking about.
Yeah, I think ultimately, you know, we got to think about the citizen involvement and, you know, things of that nature. And, you know, you know, the ugly reality is that we're all in this boat together.
Patrick, you were going to say something?
Are any of these things council really want us to explore, like a whole one-time surplus? In essence, that's kind of probably what Chesapeake did is that they took some of the fund balance across the city and then used that to...
I think that's, I think that very well could be a viable option.
The, the thing about it, if it's a, if it's a rate decrease or a surplus, something, council needs to be willing for us to look at the entire organization, dedications, schools, everything.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, part of the challenge that we have, you know, I, I would recommend...
So just to clarify, if you want me to go down that path, we'll be articulating the schools. Show us what you're going to, just basically assume a two cents reduction or something like that.
I would say take a look at those two options. And, you know, and figure out, maybe we can figure out what the, you know, the best course would be. Hutch.
So I just want to make sure, from what we talked about yesterday, we're not undoing what we asked you to do yesterday, right this moment.
Sounds like an addendum.
Okay.
It sounds like...
Not undoing because I want that work done from yesterday.
What it sounds like I'm hearing from the council is still scrub the dedications to figure out what capacity there is for either additional taxpayer relief or, or for reproductization to achieve other goals and priorities of the council. What it sounds like council's saying on right now is that as I prepare the proposed budget, prepare it with a reduction in taxes. And I think that's what I'm hearing. I think what I'm also, what I'm asking is that in order to do that, am I free to look at everything? So every, you know, because again, as we try to articulate to you, if we put it all just on the general government, when you scrub it all down, you get to basically about 500, 450 million bucks. That puts the burden on, and a lot of times we're not going to want to hit it to public safety. So we're not necessarily going to want to do it to the general government for the impacts you're going to get on it. But if we look at across the entity, we can minimize that impact. So I want to make sure everybody's okay with, if that's what you all want me to do, is look to see giving you a proposed budget with a rate reduction that all budget units, dedications and funds of the city get associated with that.
And, you know, Hutch, you know, I concur, but I think, once again, I think in terms of setting the priorities, when we look at our established four high priorities, was stormwater, public safety, schools and attainable housing. You know, I think we can focus on that. And, but once again, I think, you know, looking into realm of what's possible, but still maintaining our quality of life, I know is a challenge. Chris, did you have something?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Dyer. My feedback would be, I think we need to be direct and kind of clear. So if it's two cents, I think the seven cents we all agree is not going to happen without impacting staff, that we don't want to impact FTEs. So there's a compromise. If we were at two or three cents, whatever that is, I think we have to be very clear coming out of here. So you can communicate to the school board, especially we've, I've heard six or seven council members mention the desire to have a meeting with them in the next few months. Why not go into that meeting with them knowing, because I mean, two cents is 16 million. So we're talking, what, eight and seven? Eight?
Yes, sir.
Nine and six?
Yeah. And sir, and I don't want to interrupt you. I want to, can I clarify one thing you said? Sir, if council wants to, and I just want to clarify it just for the record, I don't want y'all to do this. I just want to clarify just so I didn't leave you all without information. If council wanted to go revenue neutral, as Kevin showed you the dedications, that's a 20 cent equivalent. We could go down that path and not impact staff. There's ways to do it without impacting staff, but you got to open the whole organization to it. I don't want you to go down that path. But if it's a, and I think you all landed on a two cents because y'all need to fully know what the impacts of that could be. But I think where y'all are landing on is a two cents. If the two cents is, Patrick, we want to see some reduction of around that with the proposed budget. And Patrick, it's okay for you to kick the tires on all elements of the organization, including letting the schools know that it's the expectation that you all will eat this share as well. That's achievable. I could do that if that's where the body wants to go. But it's just got to be everybody. You got to share that load.
You know, you know, I, you know, I think, you know, dare I say, sharing the pain. But, you know, but once again, we're in extraordinary times. And, you know, I think, you know, Hutch brings up a good point that, you know, a lot of the, you know, especially there are some, like I say, just some critical areas that, you know, have to be, you know, taken into consideration. But, but once again, you know, I think that, you know, we started off the presentations yesterday with the assumption of a revenue budget. And then we found out that would be extreme pain. That may have extremely long-term consequences. So, you know, but I think by at least having, you know, you know, the three options, what it would be, you know, if we just went, you know, with your budget as thought, but also the consideration for the two percent, and then also the possibility of a rebate, you know, we can maybe...
So Mayor, I'm hearing something different.
Okay, I'll tell you what. Let's go with the two cents.
Let me tell you what I'm, let me tell you what I'm hearing. I just want to make sure we're clear.
Okay.
I'm hearing that it's your desire that when I propose something, that I propose a rate decrease around two cents.
Two cents, okay.
Right. Okay. And then in addition to that, still do the dedication exercise of what additional capacity that would do. As I go to present y'all a two cent reduction, I'm free to kick the tires on all budgetary units and dedications and fiscal policies of the city.
Correct.
To get y'all there. Okay.
Is everybody okay with that?
I have a question.
Yep, Barbara.
Last year, you gave us a breakdown of, okay, if we cut one cent, these would be the things, two cents, three cents, four cents. You're not talking about doing it that way.
That is not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about, what I think I hear from you all is that, Patrick, when you propose your budget, we want to see a two cent decrease in my proposed budget. So my starting point to you all would be a two, two cent decrease in the real estate rate. And then you all would choose to go lower, stay at my two cent reduction, or raise revenues if y'all wanted to raise revenues. It's not just given options. It's literally saying, come with a two cent as the starting point.
As a starting point.
And as part of, to get to the two cents, Patrick, you're allowed to tell the schools, you're going to eat a penny, right? Or you're going to eat two, your share of the two cents. You know, so basically if it's 16, schools roughly, you're going to do 46% of 16 million. And then the city will figure out the rest of it by looking at all policies and dedications and whatnot and, and operations to get there.
Are we okay with that, folks?
I'd like to know.
Kevin wants to clarify something.
We will.
Yes. So to backtrack to what the vice mayor was talking about, the options in terms of the mechanism on the revenue side to get to the two cent can, is to be explored as well, looking at whether it's a temporary reduction or, or just outright proposed reduction in the rate via the ordinance. And the reason I ask for that clarification is because it will take some work getting with the city treasurer to see what the possibility is on the billing. I know there's a heavy IT influence. And so that could just take some work. And if there's a estimated cost to revisit anything about the technical system that generates the bills, I just want to put that out there as that will be things we need to take into consideration as well.
And Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, that's only on the one-time component. And then just note as well that Chesapeake did that one time, one year, then last year, then they lowered their taxes last year as well. So if you guys want to do this, just do it versus trying to do this one-time thing because it's not going to really resonate, you know. So if council wants to do this, we can just...
Should we just go at least a two percent now, just to get to starting point in the budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Mayor?
Yep, Josh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I do understand and empathize certainly and agree to an extent with the direction we're heading. Because I think it's important to be sensitive to taxpayers and what they're feeling at the gas pumps and in the grocery stores. I am concerned, however. And I, I want to be on record saying that I think we get tremendous value for what we pay locally. Every single dollar of local tax returns directly more benefit to our citizens than state or federal taxes or any other form of taxation. So I think our staff and our manager do an excellent job running a fiscally sound and responsible organization. I think our staff, and I know we all share this, this point of view. I think our staff does a tremendous job delivering services that people depend on. We are the lowest taxed city in our region at under a dollar. I would invite anybody to go try and live somewhere else in the country and pay less in taxes than we do in Virginia Beach. I know my, my mother lives in a 1,200 square foot condo in the Midwest and she pays the same amount of real estate taxes than I, as I do on my home and, and property. So I, I, I understand the rationale. I understand the reason. I understand the, the temptation to, to want to lower the rate. But, you know, we, we started out yesterday by talking about how we absorbed 4.3 cents with the stormwater bond referendum on the back of a 2.6 cents decrease. So, so we're, we're already doing more with less. And I respect the will of the majority, but I, I do want to stick up for the fact that we get tremendous value for what we pay for.
And, you know, if I can say, Josh, I truly appreciate your comments. You know, the rate is one thing, but you know, the increase in assessments, you know, that benefits, you know, you've got to think about folks that are fixed incomes. You know, we have a lot of retirees that live in this town. And so the rate, you know, trust me, I'm happy that we have the lowest rate because, you know, once again, everybody else in the 757 and the Commonwealth, everybody else's assessments are going up. You know, so I think, you know, the fact that we're at least, we're at least holding the rate and everything. But, you know, I guess the concern is, as I, as I mentioned before, we're a city where we're aging, both in terms of infrastructure and people. And with the amount of retirees, we have a lot of military retirees, people that retire from, you know, working for the city, you know, still live here. Some of them become city council members. Okay. You know, but once again, I think, you know, just showing a little consideration. I think that, you know, the point was a while ago, I said, okay, what would it cost us to go revenue neutral? And we determined through discussion that that would not be a practical thing to do. You know, there's one thing, you know, about cutting fat. There's another thing about cutting muscle and bone. And that's what exactly would be happening. So the thing is, let's at, at least, you know, make it aspirational, bring in the two cents, and then we'll talk about it. We'll talk about, you know, and we'll do a SWOT analysis on it.
Sir, all right, I got it from there. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Well, I was just going to follow up as what Josh said. I, you know, I'm very sensitive to all this, but I really think that people want to know what it is we're cutting out, what it is they're doing without. And so I thought the other way of doing it gave them that answer. Whereas this way, I don't think it does.
Barbara, they're going to be, bring forward for discussion in public and with public hearings. Trust me, the pub, public will be accommodated and educated.
And we had three people last year that voted against the budget because they said there was not a tax decrease, you know, that we didn't have that. So the assessments were going up six, seven percent this year. Last year, they went 10%. I mean, we, we have to have balance for everyone.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, I know you're all clear. I'm just going to restate sort of what, what we think we heard. Some, starting from smaller decisions, when, when the budget comes, we'll include CIP lists by district. Big picture, council wants to maintain their focus area priorities that you've talked about. You want to continue public input and maintain the quality of life. Those are the big pictures that are driving your decision-making. Tied to that, you want to still continue to identify items you can live without if there are things that are no longer important or can be done more efficiently. And you want to strongly minimize the impact to current staff. So not looking for staffing cuts. Then the core of the decision is you are asking staff to come with about a two, two cent decrease budget to get there. You've said revenue neutral isn't practical after everything that you've heard. You are open to across-the-board cuts. Across-the-board includes schools and dedications and regional grants. So everything we talked about yesterday. So to get there, it's not just that small amount of general government number that we looked at, but those other things we talked about yesterday. So that's a modest reduction that balances a little bit of tax relief and new, new priorities, also addressing inflation. And in that, you can consider some one-time surplus of, of fund balance as well. I think that's the direction. Missed any?
Worth, I wanted to ask you or make sure I'm on the same page. So you just said a two cent decrease. That's in the assessment, not a two cent.
Mill rate.
Huh?
In the mill rate. And the, so the city assessment is based on values. It's the rate that we charge.
Right. But that's not a two cent tax. That's, that's lower in the assessment. Instead of going up seven, we're going up five. I just don't understand. I'm sorry.
What, what I heard is a two cent reduction, Kevin. I don't know if you want to clarify?
That would be correct. It'd be a two cent reduction. So the proposed budget would include a 97 cent real estate, a proposed real estate tax rate as opposed to the 99 cent.
Okay.
All right. Yeah. Anything else? Any clarifications?
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think council could go, so the floor is now councils, and I know there's a couple of items that other council members wanted to talk about.
Okay.
I don't know if lunch is ready yet or...
Okay. Yeah, let's go ahead and have the conversation.
Okay.
Break the lunch. Josh, you wanted to start, and then Chris asked for a courtesy also.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Friday of last week, I circulated a, a bit of correspondence to all of you and an accompanying proposed draft ordinance for your consideration and review. And just to give you a little bit of history in terms of where it's coming from, this is relative to the Process Improvement Steering Committee's recommendation a year ago from, you know, last, our first retreat together as a council to form a working group to look at the stormwater issues. And, you know, we recognize, and I think we've, we've even said it to, you know, the last couple of days. And certainly, it's been identified in the count plan feedback that there exists this friction between economic growth and meeting our housing needs, particularly affordable housing, workforce housing on the one hand. And then our commitment to being a resilient community, addressing stormwater and flooding and, and sea level rise related challenges on the other. Our stormwater regulations are the strictest in the Commonwealth and for good reason, given our geographic location and our susceptibility to sea level rise and recurrent flooding. But at the same time, as necessary as they are, they do present challenges, given the importance of prioritizing redevelopment over new development and the constraints that exist with regard to the availability of land that we, that we face. A year ago, as I mentioned, the Process Improvement Steering Committee recommended that we form an advisory group to address some of these issues. In June of last year, I sent you all a letter informing you that, that I was, I was working on preparing a, a draft ordinance and that in line with PISK's recommendation. And then we started the work from like basically two basic premises. One is we have a big city and some areas that are more susceptible to flooding than others, based on their location and soil types, whole host of issues. And then two, we have policy objectives like... And then two, we have policy objectives like affordable and workforce housing, preservation of open space, enhancement of our tree canopy, and more bike, bikeable, walkable community, more open space, things of that nature. I began thinking about the proposed composition of such a group, and, and it was important, obviously, to, you know, include folks who, you know, work on these issues every day, like, you know, who are in the development community, who are engineers, who are technicians of the trade. But also equally important is having people in the room who have an environmental perspective and who are conservation minded. And another important aspect of, of this group is I wanted there to be plenty of sunshine on it. I wanted public involvement. And, and I also know that, you know, it's our goal to, you know, work together as a body. So, so I, I asked staff, and they kindly prepared a map of our city, of council districts overlaid by the, our, of various watersheds, our drainage basins in our city. So I thought it would be a neat approach to have council members who share a watershed agree on appointing resident representatives to this group that, you know, they, they, they could or don't need to have expertise, but just, it would be important just to have, you know, resident participation in the room. And the duration that I'm proposing for this advisory group would be six months. If they need more time, then they can ask for it, but, but certainly would want them to complete their work as quickly as possible. And the goal would be delivering the council some policy recommendations. The, the, the group would not be a decision-making body by any means, but just deliver us some policy recommendations. For example, I know we have a, a CIP, a cost share CIP that currently I think is two million dollars a year, where we participate alongside, you know, the, the private sector to, to augment stormwater infrastructure. So we don't have any criteria on how to dole out that, th- those dollars. And so if you've got, and I don't want to get ahead of the work of the committee, but if you've got a menu that says, are you preserving more open space than you otherwise might have to, you know, check? If you are enhancing tree canopy either on site or otherwise, check. If you are building in a strategic growth area or a place that, high ground that doesn't flood, check. Are you building workforce or attainable housing, check. And then, so on the other side of that, maybe they get access to certain benefits or incentives to, to try and help incentivize that good, th- those good policy outcomes that we want to see. Overall, really, that's the goal, is, is, is to encourage and incentivize projects that have desirable policy outcomes from our perspective. And I know we also have the issue of the Count Plan Amendment that has been hanging out there for a while. I think this would be a, a good forum for the group to address that issue. And, and we can do that in the public, in the public's eye, with public participation, with staff assistance as necessary. And, and I would just, and I have the proposed ordinance for, for your consideration. I'd love to hear your feedback, and I appreciate the time, and sorry for being long-winded.
Thank you, anybody, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Josh, you weren't long-winded, I'm gonna be long-winded, but thank you. I'm gonna go back to the survey, and I appreciate as a liaison your work on this, because I know you have put in a lot of effort, so my comments are not directed at you, Councilman Schulman. But I, I have a serious concern. Citizen trust, not trusting the city council, what and why? And in the planning and development, they desire fewer studies, more action. And so I'm gonna walk down the timeline, because this is very important when you talk about the integrity of the previous body. And we have some of those members here that can answer what and why. I know Councilwoman Henley, the former Lewis Jones at the time, it's an article, and one other individual did not support the delay. I can pull up the article if you want, but I asked, I sent an email to our city council on November twenty ninth, including the mayor, city attorney, Kathy Warren, and Carrie Bookhold. And I have asked for the city attorney to be available. And I just wanted to understand the timeline and the commitments, because some of the things Councilman Schulman's asking for don't necessarily align with the commitments and the promises. And so I'm gonna take my time, sorry if it holds up lunch, but this is why we're here. And the city manager provided us a timeline and documentation. Two thousand twenty-one, September seventh, city council passes resolution outlining commitments. If referendum is approved, following statement including, included in resolution to be adopted within three weeks of bond referendum passing. And this also goes to the, the issues I brought up yesterday with due diligence, I think a lack of foresight and vision. The amendment, the resolution reads, and this was a commitment, that if the, the voters approve this, this is the direction the previous council, which five of us weren't on, six of us, an amendment to the city comprehensive plan, comprehensive land use plan that will recommend denial for any project or development that generates a net cre- net increase in water discharge demand in any watershed or in any drainage system in watershed over the capacity of net of margin to meet the model discharge baseline of the drainage system at buildout and further requiring the planning department to recommend denial of any submission that does not conform, conform to the former. November second, two thousand twenty-one, flood protection program bond referendum passes. November tenth, eight days later, planning commission recommends denial of, of the amendment. December seventh, city council defers item. So the commitment was three weeks, and I understand in our previous conversations, Councilman Schulman, you had stated that maybe they didn't understand what the commitment was, what they were getting into, but that's not up for discussion if they've made the commitment. And Dana or the city attorney, if you could provide us, we, we didn't have to do that, but that was a commitment that was made. And this is why, in question seven, the people said, citizen trust, not trusting the city council. Be specific, tell the what and why. It's also important, because you just jumped to two thousand twenty-three. January fourth, city council defers the item again. February first, city council defers the item. February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, city council refers item back to planning commission and requests stakeholder engagement. That's not the commitment. March ninth, two thousand twenty-two, planning commission workshop. April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, planning commission recommends denial of the amendment. And we all know, we don't always take the direction of the planning commission. We can look at some previous votes. We don't always take the direction of our advisory boards. It's only when it's suitable, when we decide it's what we want to do. April two thou, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, PISC, Process Improvement Steering Committee, discusses planning commission topic of stormwater regulations, this is important. May third, two thousand twenty-two, city council defers the item again indefinitely and refers proposed amendment language to PISC. And then it says, see the two attached PDFs, you all have this. May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, PISC discusses planning commission topic of stormwater regulations. Meeting notes linked here, so we all have access to that. June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, PISC improvement, PISC discusses planning commission topic of stormwater regulations. July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, the chair recommends formal correspondence to the mayor, which can be found in meeting minutes. This is important in terms of Mr. Martin's presentation at the last retreat. August, in August, Chair Martin described the work as being relieved from PISC. Mayor Dyer specifically asked PISC to no longer proceed with recommendations related to stormwater regulation. That is in the minutes of the PISC. So you can read, so that was a direct instruction from the mayor, he was at the meeting. And so I don't understand why they continued in that direction, if they take direction from the council, even though they're advisory. And then Chair Martin's email, you can see in his reply, and the track changes he made in the Word document. Now, fast forward to two thousand twenty-three, we receive a packet item, we go into our retreat, and that's where it gets interesting. Mr. Martin shows up, we had Chuck Bowie present, and they mentioned the idea of convening a task force to come up with some recommendations to put in front of you. It was quoted that that would take place in the next four to six weeks. So the first question I have, just like the people, they said they want to know what and why. What happened, why didn't we get those? Haven't got that answer. And for the record, I did ask Councilman Schulman to have the chair and vice chair, I think it's Mr. Martin and Chuck Bowie, here today, because I've called Chuck twice, I can't get a return call. What happened, why it happened? It's been over a year, but Mr. Martin did mention in his presentation, that is, can be found on Facebook in our archive, that the goal was to find middle ground, that's not what seventy-three percent of the people asked for. Short timeframe, he said it would be a short timeframe, and he said, you can trust me. Councilmember Rouse then asked one question, who is on the task force? Brad Martin responded, that would be up to you all. I understand Councilman Schulman took leadership, he took initiative, but there was no discussions in the past year, at least, and I'll, I want to have, have a asterisk here, I wasn't included in any of those discussions to ask who's on the task force, because I see the same names, well-respected, but Billy Allmond, Chuck Bowie. There's more than Chuck Bowie in terms of developers, and there are more landscape architects or architects than Mr. Billy Allmond, who's done a lot of projects in the area. How many of my colleagues were involved with Councilman Schulman in these discussions? I don't know. We haven't defined any clear strategies in terms of what we want to do. We've clearly found out in the last two days, we haven't discussed any monies towards affordable housing. We just received the housing study, a week ago, two weeks ago, and there is, I don't want to say contention, but there's not necessarily consensus on this council of what direction we're gonna go in. And so the integrity of the previ- previous council and the promises and the commitment they made to the citizens has yet to come forth. Mr. Mayor, you said the goal of the task force would be, I believe at your Hampton Roads Realtor Association discussion, how to generate affordable housing. It's not necessarily the goal of PISC. Brad Martin was not aware last year, again, if you go to the archive and the tape, I asked him specific questions. He wasn't aware of the housing data. And I sit as a liaison with Councilmember Rouse and Councilmember Dr. Ross Hammond. He wasn't aware of the data that had come out for builds. He stated, quote, developers must get the most bang for their buck. PISC Direction eight thirty-one twenty-two, the mayor specifically asked Mr. Martin, drop it, leave it alone, no longer need it. And then Mayor Dyer, you had remarks on the first of this year, the first of February this year at HRRA, and you did mention draconian measures. I'll, I'll leave that up to you to discuss that. Stormwater management resolution, city council adopted, specific commitments, seventy-two percent of voters approved. Put forth a new referendum, if we want to ask these questions now, let's put forth another referendum to the, the citizens and see if they want us to do this. I would love to have developers come in, I asked for some data, which I think is important when we're talking about friction versus economic growth, God bless you, for housing. And this is interesting, because there's, the draconian measures are preventing development, even though we don't have a lot of land. Yet, in two thousand, I asked for nine years of data. Two thousand twenty-three, we had three hundred and sixteen total new homes built in the city of Virginia Beach, two of them under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty-eight between two hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand dollars, and then a hundred and seventy-six over a hundred, over five hundred thousand dollars for a total three hundred and sixteen, and then you had new apartment units, six hundred and sixty-five. Now that is important, because that is a fifty percent year-over-year growth. In two thousand twenty-two, we had one home under two fifty, so builders are not building affordable homes if affordable is under two fifty. Two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred and ninety-two homes, so in a year, we went from ninety-two to a hundred and thirty-eight. And then over five hundred thousand dollars, which a majority of those take place in District Eight, Councilman Remick's district, and in Barbara's district. A hundred and eighty-nine for a total of two hundred and eighty-two, so almost a ten, fifteen percent jump from twenty-two to twenty-three, but draconian measures are preventing development. And new apartment units delivered in two thousand twenty-two was a hundred and fifty-two versus six hundred and sixty-five. That's almost four X. So what I would like to, and we can go down the list, but I, I see the, I'm not gonna keep going. We could go through two thousand fifteen. Bring in the developers, I want to see P and L's, because I don't think they're losing money. If their building were increasing units, many of those affordable units are either taking place in Amelia's district or my district, or Michael's district along the interstate. We have a new housing that just opened up off in Birchwood for seniors in my district. And so if there's such friction and the regulations are so difficult, how do we explain, and I will give you two thousand twenty-one, thirteen under two fifty, not, not, not out the ballpark, a hundred and twenty-one from two fifty to five hundred, so still a ten percent gain, and then a hundred and eighty-three over five hundred thousand for a total of three hundred and seventeen units. So in three years with these draconian measures, inflation, interest rates, no affordability, builders are just having, it's just so tough. We built one less home in two thousand twenty-three than two thousand twenty-one, and two hundred and forty more apartment units. I don't understand the need for the task force. Go back to a referendum and ask the people, what did you want? Why did you want it? Why did you support this measure? And then go back to the council and say, why haven't we done what was committed? Because that is the integrity issue. That is the concern that citizens have raised, not Councilmember Taylor, that they don't trust the city council when we don't tell them what and why. So nothing against Councilman Schulman, but I can't support another task force to tell us what we haven't asked them to tell us. Mayor Dyer, you instructed them, leave it alone. There's things happening at the state and local level, you know what you said. And they continued to move down that direction till we had a new council come in, and then they partnered with Councilman Schulman to come up with this idea for the Stormwater Management Implementation Advisory Group. I don't understand why we're doing it. Go back to the public, implement the seventy-five words, or at least explain why we haven't done that, because we keep taking the money, keep taking that four point one cents. So that's my position, thank you for all the hard work, Councilman Schulman, but I think we have some questions to ask to the seventy-three percent of people that decided they wanted to go in the direction and support the previous council. And to this date, this body nor the previous one has answered the question, what and why are we going in the direction? And you had three council members that said there's no need for the delay. I think the vice mayor at the time, Louis Jones, Councilmember Henley, you were there. And I want to know why we have boards that are going in the opposite direction of guidance from the mayor, thank you.
I, I will be glad to clarify things. You know, first of all, you know, a lot of times when we pass things, especially on, we did it quickly last time. There really wasn't that much deliberation going on, there was a hard press issue to at least, you know, pass. And a number of us really, you know, didn't vote for us the first go around. Number two, there is this thing I call courage of convictions that we have to do, the resolve that we have to do, especially in the realm of for, of affordable housing, attainable housing, which became the difference between that was we decided that that was our fourth highest priority in, you know, going forward. And then the other thing is courage to conviction, when we talk about affordable housing, we maintain it as a high priority. And then when we have our first test of it, you know, what happens? You know, we made a commitment, and some folks did not want to show a courage of conviction. We had letters from the military approving the silo project. We had members from the military, all four branches at the Pentagon, indicating to me that this was a high priority and what we must use going forward. On the regional task force of the Hampton Roads Planning Commission is dedicated that they were watching us for, to see our courage of conviction. The reality, let's just say it costs a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a modest price to buy a piece of land. We have been told there is now a ninety- We have been told there is now a 90, on an average regionally, $93,000 regulatory cost goes into it. So, we're talking about a quarter million dollars before the first nail is put in the first board. Okay, going forward. And the thing is, you know, there were concerns raised by the planning commission about the impact of what's going on. And the developers don't absorb the cost. They pass it on, you know, to the people that are buying it. Now, we talk badly about developers. And you know, I was, you know, accused during the silo project of fast-tracking and being in the pockets and everything. We made a commitment to attainable housing. We're running out of land. There's certain things we must do. If we're going to have the economic development we need going forward. If we're going to have places for the people that were working in Amazon and keeping our children here in meaningful jobs, housing is going to be a part of it. Now, as, as an elected group of representatives, the law of unintended consequences sometimes is not known for a year or two down the line. We have heard that with some of the regulations in PEC, I remember one project that we built on Hampton Boulevard. A studio apartment was renting for $1,500 because of a lot of the, you know, the, you know, the burden of what's going on. Now, I'm not saying disregard the regulations, but you know, right by City Hall, they built a wonderful veterans facility, but they use state objectives, which keeps us competitive. And the thing is, if every other city in the region is going by state standards and we have higher standards, it makes us in many, many ways non-competitive. And the point is, when we say, sit here and say, "Everything should be on the table." Every council member should be allowed to say, "Okay, here's an idea how we can build maybe a better mousetrap." Now, the thing is, in terms of the public engagement, you know, Mr. Shulman's recommendation, with my concurrence, is heavy explaining to the public why we think this may be necessary. You know, this is not going to be brought forward to a vote anytime soon. But the point is, as we are confronting these new challenges and we want to have some form of housing direction. And the thing is, you know, you know, the current regulations that we have, yeah, I'm going to tell you, I think they're draconian in many ways. In some areas of the city that were geographic and, you know, are essential, they are appropriate. But in other areas, they may not be. Maybe one-size-fits-all doesn't work. Can we be adaptable? Can we be flexible? Can we be nimble, you know, going forward? I think as any elected body, whether it be in the city council, in Richmond, or in Congress, and they find out something that they passed really isn't working as intended, we have the obligation to at least look into it. And so, by at least, you know, coming up with some, you know, study committees, you know, I think, you know, we get some good, valuable recommendations. So, I'm going to stand by it. You know, let's bring it forward. Let's get the right people to the table. Let's bring the public into the conversation. And then as a deliberative body, you know, see if we can come up with something different. Okay? Just a thought. To me, having a study is not a problem. Barbara.
Well, having been on the council that adopted that resolution that we put before the public for the bond referendum, and that wording that we said that anything had to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan, particularly for the stormwater. I still have no problem with having that in our, in our comprehensive plan because it says we're going to make sure the stormwater is adequate. And that's all. I don't know why the big fuss about not including that in the comprehensive plan anyway. But I think that's one of the things that we heard from the public in these community conversations is, "We want the council to stick with your comprehensive plans." And that's what we didn't do with silo. And, you know, all those references to silo that we heard wasn't in the context of silo normally, but it was about that development. So, I, I think we're, we're really putting some apples and oranges in the same pot here, and we're not keeping it separate. But one of the things that we do have seen is that with these new standards, and I am not for relaxing the standards one bit, because we know that we are second to New Orleans as being susceptible to sea level rise, to say nothing of the stormwater. So, we have to have strong conditions. And our studies have shown what we need to have. And we've spent a lot of money and a lot of time getting those models done and getting those regulations that we need to have. We need to keep those regulations. But something maybe could be improved in our process for reviewing things because if it takes years for one application to get through the process, you have increased the cost of the housing, not necessarily by the standards, but by the time. Because with development, like everything else, time is money. And when you take, when you say you've got to send something through the process seven or eight times before it can get approved, and you're two years, you've increased the cost of the product. So, I have no problem with saying, "Let's look at how we're doing it to see if we can get our process approved." I am not for reducing the standards, not one inch. They have to stick. But if we can improve our process so that it doesn't take seven or eight or 10 times to go through the process to determine whether, to get it approved, that's going to help in what we need to do, and that is not having the cost go up. So, I think we're talking about two or three different things here. That's just my comment. But I think we've got a lot of issues. And, and we seem to maybe need to talk about them individually instead of trying to lump them all in one thing. But I think we've got three or four issues with this question. But I just want everybody to know, I don't think we, I think we need to, we did the scientific data to determine what our regulations need to be, what our standards need to be. Our staff can do the modeling to tell exactly what's going to happen if we get a certain storm. And by golly, when we're building things, we need to build it that it's not going to flood, and it's going to be what we can, we can assure the people that they're buying something that is going to last a reasonable Valentine. Sea level rise, who knows how long it's going to be before the sea level is here? We can't control that. So, I'm not for really reducing our standards one bit, but I, I'd see no problem with looking at our process to see if we could improve the timing that it takes.
You know, and Barbara, you know, I truly appreciate your comments, and I truly appreciate your passion. You know, it, it's the type of thing that, once again, I think the process does take so incredibly long and is tedious. And Patrick, isn't it, did you mention something some while ago that, you know, with the, you know, with certain regulations, you need a certain level of engineer to, you know, help shepherd things through?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. With the new standards, the planning department had to increase the level of qualifications and requirements and skill set for the engineers. So, they used to be able to do the stormwater reviews with an engineer one. I think now we need an engineer three.
And you have a trouble recruiting them, engineer threes?
We had a difficult time recruiting engineer threes, sir. That's correct.
See, and that's what I'm saying about being adaptable, you know, to time and change and situations. And I think Barbara brings up, talk about progress. And the other thing is to find out if the standards that are improved are indeed appropriate. And my concern was especially, Barbara, what you said about the turnaround time. You know, where people were coming back, you know, sometimes it was taken, I, I spoke to somebody that had, prior to the regulations, had some middles, and they all had four comments on it. After the regulations, I think they had over 100 comments on it. Okay? You know, so the thing is, is it bogged down? Okay, I, I'll change the term from draconian to bogged down. And the thing is, you know, when somebody comes in and wants to build a building, or whether it be a house or a commercial property, and it takes the better part of two years, you know, what do you say to economic development? "Oh, yeah, bring your company here. Maybe in a couple of years, we can get the plans approved." You know, so I concur with you. And I think that the nature of the study is not conclusive or directed of reducing the plans necessarily, but maybe, you know, certain areas, they just may not be applicable. I had one person, they got a project denied because of a quarter of an inch of an incline that wasn't there, you know, for drainage. Maybe appropriate, maybe not. I don't know. But the thing is, I think by having an eclectic group of people with no, you know, real agenda. But you know, let me just say this about that because, you know, once again, by my comments, you know, I expect to hear, "Oh, here we go," you know, you know, pro-developer. You know, let me tell you about pro-developers. You know, when my brother was alive, he was a carpenter. He worked for developers. Built bridges, built buildings, built homes, you name it. What do developers do? Every one of us live in a home, in a building, and even where we're sitting right now was built by somebody. And developers, you know, they take a tremendous amount of risk. How many times do they put hundreds of thousands of dollars into a plan? And then we might shoot it down. Okay? And you know what they do? They hire people, they're employers. They hire engineers. They hire architects and, you know, project managers and things like that. They employ carpenters, electricians, plumbers, excavators. And they also are purchasers. They buy lumber, they buy fixtures and everything. When you realize the value that these folks have to the economy about keeping us going, about creating businesses and homes that tax and are revenue generators for us, yet so many people demonize them. And a lot of the contractors eventually go out of business because of a lot of things. They pass on what goes on with inflation. But once again, when we're talking about regulatory costs of $93,000, and that came up in that panel discussion that, that I had with the people. And if you also recall, when we had the briefing on attainable housing, one of the recommendations that was up there, you know, was take a look at the regulations. Okay? So, the point is, I really don't see at least going forward, you know, with the study for now. And you know, Barbara said, "I did." There's a, this is a multi-pronged approach. And I think Josh's approach of, you know, doing it, maybe go in there with no preconceived notions, take a look at things. Let's see if we can improve the mousetrap. Okay? Chris, and then Josh.
Thank you. My closing remarks. Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Councilwoman Henley. Here's a novel idea. How about we bring forth the, the builders and developers of these roughly 1,500 units and homes over the last two years? The silos, Franklin Johnson was at the housing summit that we hosted in May. Application before planning in June. When did we vote? Two, three months later, multiple errors on the application, not knowing what zone they were in. Barbara, did that, was that aligned with the comp plan? The, the advisory boards that we have, did they support this, this project? Because there was no clear strategic goal. So, let's bring forth these developers and builders that have built these 1,500 units as part of Council Shulman's task force. And let's hear from them if they waited two years, if the 93,000 was maybe once or twice. Because I'm not seeing the delays in District 8. I'm seeing them pop up. There's one for sale right now, 1.4 million, six months out of the ground. So, let's talk to the actual developers and builders, and maybe they can bring those P&Ls and see how much profit is there because I'm not against development. But we need to have responsible development. And when we put 176 units on less than three acres, when they got the location wrong, where they even were, and there's no questions asked, and I believe that was fast-tracked. So, and maybe if it wasn't, how do we get other applications to get that, go that quickly? And let's hear. Because, once again, the public has said, "There's not a trust when we don't say what and why." And they're tied to studies.
Well, with due respect, you know, Mr. Taylor, you know, all the indicators are, you know, there are some people that just don't trust government. I agree with that. But there are a lot of other people that trust us, and we have proven to be a very trustworthy thing. In other words, you know, if you take a look at the Wall at Hupp, we are third in the nation for people being certified, you know, with the way we do business. The silo project was first put on, I believe brought forward in May. It was scheduled for a September vote. We found out that was a miscalculation, and then we brought it back in November. And once again, we determined that affordable, attainable housing. But the thing is, what did we hear? Okay? "It's a great idea, but just don't build it near me." But once again, if we're going to have the courage of conviction, and I'm sure that within the context of this study, all of the concerns that you're bringing up and others will have can be brought up. Okay? Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just, I just want to address the timing element. You know, when, when I, when I first joined the council and had this issue kind of, you know, presented to me in, in January of last year, you know, first, first time I counsel, first time through a budget. And, you know, I mean, I, I did it as soon as I possibly could. And I did it with as much care and forethought and, you know, communication as, as I possibly could. You know, that, that's why you heard from me in June, you know, after, after the budget cycle with the letter informing you of what I was doing. And, and that's why you heard from me again about this in October, when I presented you with a draft resolution and, and, you know, a prior iteration around the table at, at a workshop, or I think informal. It was late September, early October. Because I wanted your feedback, and I wanted, I wanted other folks' feedback too. And, you know, I, I did meet.
Yeah, bless you.
You know, Councilwoman Henley had a great suggestion that I go in front of Green Ribbon Committee. I did that. In the, in the submittal to you, there's a, a letter from Green Ribbon Committee that, that, you know, endorses the, the creation of this group. And I've, I've spoken with staff. I've spoken with their city attorney's office. I've spoken with, you know, Virginia Beach Vision's resilience task force, a bunch of, you know, environmentally-minded, you know, business-oriented people who, who gave me great feedback. I mean, some of the feedback included, add a planning commission liaison, add, add a student, you know, a couple of student representatives or, you know, non-voting members for, for that participation. So, the, the time I took wasn't, wasn't meant to do anything other than try and make, make the composition right, make the, make the draft ordinance stronger. And, and, and I know I've, I've reached out to several of you privately along the way as well. So, because I wanted to get it right. I understand, I understand how important it is to the public. I understand the intent of, of these regulations are to protect our investment and to be good stewards to the taxpayer. And, and I mean, those, those were chief of mind going into this process. And yeah, it took me a year. There were a bunch of people, I think, who wanted me to get it done quicker, but I had to get it done right. It's better to do it right than get it done quick. And, you know, you contrast that with, with a comp plan amendment that had a three-week timetable with virtually no stakeholder input. I mean, typically, a comp plan amendment would be, you know, 30 days, public notice, planning commission, then the city council. I mean, it's a three-month process typically. So, I, I just, rather than rush it and get it wrong, I just wanted to make sure to get it right. And that, that's why I'm here before you today. And, and again, we're not voting on this today. I just, I wanted to circulate this for, for your thoughts and consideration. If you want to help me make this better, please do.
Okay. Worth.
Thank you, Mayor. And healthy discussion, of course, as land use is around the city government. Thank you, Councilman Shulman, for your work on this. And I do agree with you, Mayor, on a lot of points that you made. So, a couple of points I want to make is, I'm not involved with the Process Improvement Steering Committee, AKA PISC, but I have been following this along. And I'm in the industry of real estate, and to require a builder, home builder or a commercial builder to build a building or a house with no stormwater going into the streets or, or the drainage system, I think is probably unreasonable. This is not my job every day is to understand this. I think we all, and the public needs more information on stormwater, how we do this in, in building homes and buildings in the future. So, I'd like, that's why I think this, what you're bringing forward is, is a task force to discuss this. But I bring the attention to the public and this body, the two articles recently in the paper that talked about... that two, uh, articles recently in the paper that talked about this region and the city losing young people to other parts of the state. And also recently last week, where the city, we, uh, we lost fifty-eight hundred residents, five thousand eight hundred residents. I don't know who calculated that number, but that, that number is out there. And so, yes, we're losing people. So if we do want to respond to the, the public and have, uh, economic opportunities, which is businesses and for folks to, for places to live in, affordable and affordable housing, you do have to cut costs on regulations. And we have to, we have to have that discussion. I'm not saying right now we should reduce them, but let's have the discussion, which is different than it was when this council looked at that resolution two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you. Good discussion. And Chris, did you say you wanted to make a statement?
No, sir. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
And I was just going to mention that Councilman Schulman did show me what he has written up, and it impacts quite a few different districts. I know for mine is the Elizabeth River watershed, right? So, you know, it impacts many. So it's worth looking at.
Okay. Michael?
I just want to say, serving an area that was most significantly impacted by Hurricane Matthew in two thousand and sixteen, that I don't question the, um, intent of any member of this body or staff or the public in terms of their commitment to ensuring that homes do not flood, that property is not damaged, and that our neighborhood isn't safe, our neighborhoods are safe from flooding. Um, I do think, and, and I respect, uh, Mr. Taylor's passion about this, but I do think that, um, it's really important that we just remember, we can always make improvements. That's the point why we're here. That's the, um, nature of good government. And I think that's our commitment as public servants is to continuously examine what we're doing and how we can do it potentially better. That includes the stormwater regulations and procedures and processes and our policies related to development, which ultimately, as the mayor pointed out, is, is, um, development is where we live and it's where we shop and it's how we live our lives. And so any process that just examines how we can make improvements about how, and by the way, also, it's our jobs and it's our economy. Any process that I think could examine improvements for that, um, make proposals, encourage public participation, I think is something we should lean into, not away from. But at the same time, as Mrs. Henley noted, not, not eliminating the standards, not making things easier or more dangerous or more, uh, potential for flooding, but just makes things better. I think that's important, that we continue to remain committed to making things better. That's why we all sought office and are sitting at this table is so we can make things better. And I, I'm, I'm open-minded to any discussion or process that can make things better for the people of Virginia Beach.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else bringing up? Okay, folks, I, I want to, I want to thank you all. I think one of the things that we, you know, kind of agreed on, everything's got to be on the table, you know, especially going forward. Any idea, any suggestion? Uh, but the, the one thing, you know, I, I'm personally pleased on, we talked about some very touchy stuff, but we all were, it's in the spirit of civility, mutual respect. You know, we're in this boat together, not only as a council, but with the, with the staff, but also our public. And the thing is, I think we represent them well when a multitude of, uh, opinions and things come to the table. You know, if there's perceptions out there, if there's a prob, problem in process or whatever thing, we can't fix it unless we talk about it. But once again, I just want to say, I think this was a great foundation that we came up with over the last day and a half that is going to definitely enhance and, you know, make the frustrations of, you know, some of the, uh, folks in the last budget process. You know, I think things are going to go a lot better. But once again, I just want to thank you all for everything you all do. And, you know, God bless you and your families. We're adjourned. Lunchtime.